Yes, sir. Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. McGlynn?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Here. All right, may I have a motion to amend the agenda to add a closed session item related to disposition of properties?
I move.
So move. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right, our first presentation, only presentation today, will be the love sign. Carla, welcome.
Yeah. All right, well, I'm excited to share information on James City County's first love work sign. First off, a little explanation on love works and where the concept came from. The love work program is a statewide branding initiative. There we go. Designated to promote travel in Virginia and strengthen awareness of the Virginia is for lovers message. The Virginia Tourism Corporation sponsors the program and localities throughout the state are invited to create variations of the love sign that highlight the unique features of their community. A team of employees were gathered to help create our own love work that showcases some of the features that we love about James City County. These employees included individuals parks recreation, communications and graphics, and several employees who volunteered based on an interest and hobby of visiting love signs around the state. Here are some examples of love works in Portsmouth and Gloucester. Portsmouth chose a cohesive design that showcases the Elizabeth River, and Gloucester chose to showcase unique characteristics such as a Waterman's boot and a daffodil. This just gives you a perspective on how different and unique each sign can be in different localities. Employee team began the design process by hosting a public art contest where county residents could submit their ideas for what makes our community so special. We got lots of great submissions highlighting features like nature, history, and recreation. The team got together and took note of many similar designs. Ultimately, the team didn't pick one design, but instead combined several of the ideas that were submitted by citizens. After a process of trying to match what each letter stands for with choosing an appropriate graphic, Megan Finney, the county graphic designer, created our final design, which I am happy to unveil. There you go. So in the final design, each letter represents a unique aspect of James City County. So the L represents our landscape that is unique with waterways and wildlife available for exploration. The graphic contains a bald cypress tree with iconic knee roots and a blue heron, which you can see along the Chico Hominy River. O represents the opportunities for leisure and recreation that contribute to the area's healthy lifestyle. The graphic depicts a bike wheel and a canoe oar, which are just many of the activities our citizens enjoy. The V highlights the variety of attractions enjoyed by tourists and our local citizens. For this graphic, we reached out to our most recognizable area attraction, Busch Gardens, to get their permission to depict Apollo's chariot. The E encourages all to explore the county's rich history and the landmarks that tell our story. For this letter, we worked with Eric Speth, Director of Maritime Operations, Museum Operations, and Education at the Jamestown-Yorktown Foundation, to develop a historically accurate depiction of sails and mapping to represent John Smith's map of Virginia and the three ships that arrived that would become Jamestown in 1607. He has also offered to assist us with rigging for the sails. We intend to tie actual ropes between the sails in a way that is both historically accurate while ensuring that no one can climb on the sail. The individual letters will be made from sheet aluminum that will be contour cut to match the shape of the artwork with a vinyl overlay onto which the design is digitally printed. Each letter will be approximately six feet tall, and the sign will be installed at Freedom Park along with an interpretive sign that explains each letter. The sign is also being designed, so if we choose to move it to a different location in the future, we could do so. And what's our next steps? The design was submitted to the Virginia Tourism Corporation, and we were approved for a $1,500 grant to assist with the cost of the fabrication. Now that design is finalized, the citizens who contributed through the art contest will be recognized and awarded their prizes, and a contractor has been selected and fabrication will now begin for the love works and the interpretive sign. Once the sign is complete, a community ribbon cutting will be held at Freedom Park. Promotional materials such as magnets and stickers will also be created and sold in the Freedom Park Interpretive Center for tourism visitors to purchase. That is our design. I'd love to hear any feedback.
Feedback.
It's terrific. I recognize the roller coaster.
Yes.
So, I love it.
You love it?
Um, I think it's so unique. It captures the personality here. I'm gonna be a little selfish and say, you know, I, Freedom Park gets a lot of business, but I think having someplace too where it's, there isn't maybe people that recreate at the speed of Freedom Park would be a good idea as well because they, they tend to be a great picture location. Tourists love to get their pictures taken with these signs, so I hope we can work towards a second location as well. But I think you all did a great job and really captured our area in the design, for sure.
Ms. Larson, I think, you know, Carla may have plans beyond, but we have talked about other signs, not just replicating this one, but to have a few of them over time. And so I think we will work towards some other locations to consider where what you've said would be certainly good opportunities for pictures and other promotion of the county.
This one is the first one. We have plans for a second, and that is, our plan is to do one at the Warhol Sports Complex, because we figured that gets the biggest influx of tourists, and we were gonna do one there. Maybe that's more artistic, that's made out of sporting equipment, and something that all the teams that travel there can then, like, take a team photo in front of when they-
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, so.
The others?
Well done.
All right, well, thank you.
Very nice, very, very nice.
And we'll let you know when it's completed in the ribbon cutting. We'll plan a sorority for it.
That was good.
Do you anticipate it will be finished?
I believe we gave the contractor, I think the award was for 60 days to complete it.
Okay.
So sometime really hot in the summer, we'll plan the ribbon cutting.
Great, we'll be there.
That's where it works.
Congratulations to the people who submitted those entries. They were really phenomenal.
They were, lots of children and adults, and we took pieces from, you know, the different ideas and created this, so it was a good jump start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before we move into the consent calendar, we do have one member that needs to leave early, so we're gonna try to wrap our meeting up by 3:30 if possible in order to give them enough time to get where they need to be at an event that they have to definitely attend. Our consent calendar considers six items there. Anyone wish to pull anything from the consent calendar?
I'll move the adoption of the consent calendar, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Motion for adoption. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, board discussions. We have a joint work session with the planning commission, ORD-22-001 amendments for scenic roadways, and Mr. Paulster?
Good afternoon, everybody.
How are you doing, sir?
So we have pictures. It's gonna be hard to follow the love sign presentation.
It is.
I brought some pictures. I didn't realize that was gonna be that tough today. I'll go ahead and call the planning commission to order. Mr. Rogers? Mr. Rogers represents the Berkeley District. Ms. Knoll? Ms. Knoll represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Rose? Mr. Rose represents the Roberts District and is a vice chair to the commission. Mr. Haldeman?
Yeah.
Mr. Haldeman is an at-large member. Mr. O'Connor? Mr. O'Connor is an at-large member as well. Mr. Croft? Mr. Croft represents the Powhatan District. Mr. Polster? Mr. Polster represents Jamestown District and is chair of the commission. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Polster.
Welcome, Mr. Polster.
Thank you. I'm glad to see you're here.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We have two items on the agenda for today. The first one is the scenic roadway, and Mr. Haldeman is going to take the lead for that, and then we're gonna talk about the short-term reference for our second item.
Haldeman, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And thank you for this opportunity to discuss scenic roadway protection. The potential ordinance amendments for discussion today are amendments to help achieve protection and preservation of scenic roadways such as Forge Road to help retain character of the rural lands. There is a GSA land use 6.3 in the 2045 comprehensive plan specific to this potential ordinance amendment, and the board adopted an initiating resolution in late 2021 to explore implementing this. The policy committee has met four times on this subject, beginning last August and as recently as this April. We've been supported along the way by volumes of analysis and simulations and insights on how other jurisdictions handle this problem by our staff, and despite all this, we haven't reached consensus yet. So we're here to ask for some further clarification. Man, the next slide, please. With regard to the analysis, at its January meeting, the Board of Supervisors requested the policy committee review staff's analysis of the following items. The amount of homes and structures made non-conforming by a 400-foot setback proposed for Old Stage Road and Forge Road with a proposed setback of 200-foot for the parcels 500 feet deep or less, that is to say shallow parcels, whether a family subdivision could be exempt from the 400-foot or 200-foot proposed setback, and to discuss other possibilities. In this slide is an analysis of Forge Road discussing two options. Both involve the 400-foot setback. One, the top one, would require a 75-foot setback for a lot depth short of 500 feet. And there, as you can see, there are 31 total non-conforming structures as a result. 24 accessory, excuse me, 10 accessory, 21 accessory structures and 10 residences. Option number two is a 400-foot setback, just like the first option, but with a 200-foot setback for a lot depth of between 201 and 500 feet, and then back to 75 feet for a lot depth of 200 feet or less. Here, we have 36 non-conforming structures, of which 22 are accessory and 14 are residences. Do you want me to stop for questions along the way or just go right through it, or?
Go right through.
Okay, fair enough. The next four slides are maps and simulations that show the effect of the different setbacks. This is Forge Road with homes planted 400 feet back from the right-of-way. The next slide is 200 feet back from the right-of-way, and the next one is 75 feet back from the right-of-way. So you can see there's a considerable difference in the viewshed for each of the three, each of the three alternatives. The same analysis was done for Old Stage Road, but with much different results. Option one, again, 400-foot setback with a 75-foot setback for a lot depth of 500 feet or less, and here we have quite a bit more structures that would be non-conforming. 43 in total, of which 25 are accessory and 18 are residences. And then, just back one more, please, and then option number two is 400-foot setback with a 200-foot setback for lot depth between, short of 500 feet, or 75-foot setback for a lot depth of 200 feet or less. And here we have 66 total structures, of which 36 are accessory and 30 are residences. And then again, the same simulations, a map of Old Stage Road, you can see quite a bit more structures within the 400-foot setback. And then this is 200 foot from, 200 feet from the right-of-way, 75 feet from the right-of-way. There was one for 400 feet. Did we skip it? Or, yeah, here's 400 feet from the right-of-way. Again, considerable difference in the viewshed. So options. The two options that I just mentioned, 400 feet in both cases, one leaving 75 feet, which is what it is now, for lots less than 500-foot depth, and the other one, again, 400 feet setback, but 200 feet for lots between 201 and 500 feet back from the right-of-way, and 75 feet for lots with less than 200 feet depth. We also discussed a zoning overlay district, and there's several other options that we discussed along the way. So the Old Stage Road, the amount of non-conforming structures created by the 400-foot setback, as I said, would be 43 as compared to lost my thought, 31 for Forge Road. Options one or two are both choices that would use a change in the building setback as a tool and just differ in the setback specified for shallower parcels. Overall, planning staff has found that both of these setback options would fulfill the intent of the board's initiating resolution to protect the character of rural roadways. In its discussions, the policy committee discussed the benefits and drawbacks to the county of pursuing the setback option and has not yet come to a consensus, as I mentioned. The policy committee also discussed other considerations raised by the board at the January meeting. The board raised the question of whether lots created via family subdivision could be exempt from any new setback. The county attorney's office recommends against this approach since zoning regulations should be uniform for each class or kind of buildings and uses throughout each district, and this carve-out would not adhere to this principle. The policy committee also discussed the possibility of an overlay district as a potential tool for accomplishing this strategy. An overlay would be a rezoning of areas within the county to a district created for scenic road protection. Unlike the proposed setback idea, which requires the same standards to be applied to classes of roadway such as open agricultural or wooded CCCs, the overlay district, sorry, my voice is running out of gas here, but the overlay district concept could be applied on a corridor-by-corridor basis. An overlay district created on a corridor basis would allow standards to be created only for Forge Road or for Old Stage Road or for any other roads selected by the board. Planning staff has not recommended this approach for the GSA and the policy, thank you very much, policy committee has not recommended this approach at this point. In addition to the considerations above, the policy committee discussed the possibility of removing Old Stage Road as a community character corridor, which would require an amendment of the comprehensive plan. For topics or issues that have been identified between plan updates, it has been typical practice for staff to track these items for further work and potential incorporation into the next plan update. If there is a desire to revisit CCCs, one option is for staff to look at reevaluating the CCCs as part of the next regularly scheduled comprehensive plan update, and option number five would be to make no changes at all. With this additional evaluation, analysis, and discussion since the January meeting of the board, there is not currently a consensus on the next steps on which option to pursue. Therefore, respectfully, the policy committee and commission members request additional board guidance on which options to proceed for these CCC quarters that are designated open agricultural. For wooded CCCs, at its April 13, 2023 meeting, the policy committee unanimously recommended approval of draft language providing increased protections for the wooded CCCs within the county. This draft language includes landscape buffer requirements along wooded CCCs, including a 100-foot wide buffer average for commercial projects and a 200-foot wide buffer average for major residential developments, and a timbering setback buffer of at least 50 feet on properties along wooded CCCs outside the PSA. Unless otherwise directed, the next step would be to proceed with this, bringing this draft language forward to the planning commission and board of supervisors. There we are. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions?
A lot to unpack. No, go ahead.
Well, I'll just, Mr. Haldeman, thanks for the, for the very comprehensive report. And I guess what I would like to just hear a little bit about is what the advantages the divided planning commission saw in those two options that were looked at.
Sure, fair question. The, the concern about the first option is with, with narrower setbacks or with narrower property lines, excuse me, setback not very far from the road, demanding a 400-foot setback could take an unfair chunk out of the property proportionally, and that was one major concern. I, I think that is the difference between the two. My colleagues are here. If I missed anything, I think that's the major issue between those two. With regard to the zoning overlay district, we all agree that it would be very hard to institute. You would have to rezone every property in that, along that road. It would be a legislative nightmare, I think, and an administrative nightmare to do that. So that's the-
So just, just to make sure I'm, I'm clear on all this, we're not talking about removing any existing buildings. We're, we're talking about them being now classified as non-conforming, and then for new construction, they would have- And then for new construction, they would have to meet these setback requirements.
That's, that's correct. There was also discussion that applies to both of the first two options. And that is, the county has instituted a new 20 zone ordinance in the rural lands, which would apply to Forge Road, not necessarily Old Stage Road. And, and some members of the policy committee wondered if that wasn't enough to help achieve the goal of scenic roadway protection. So that was part of the discussion as well.
That's a little bit of my angst too, is that we've done a lot lately with rural lands. And so then how much more do you, you know, is, is 400? And it's sort of putting more and taking away more than, I mean, there's definitely a, a big difference in the view, that view shed, that's for sure. But do you, do you continue to whittle away on that property? That's, that's the tough question for me.
We couldn't answer that. That, that was, but that was part of the discussion.
Yeah, yeah. Do we know, are there, are there other localities that have this type of?
Steph, Steph did look at it, came back with, and bear with me all.
Hmm, okay. We think maybe Albemarle.
Albemarle is one. It almost always is. It's, there are a lot of similarities. Well, there are a lot of similarities.
Yes, there are.
Between our two. And paper, I have paper here, so.
That's okay. I just.
Ms. Rich, Rich, do you have it?
Clark, in Clark County.
Okay, thank you. Have you gotten any feedback from?
I, I've had some, some mixed feedback. I have had some citizens, since I live in rural lands, that are very supportive of the 400 feet and others that are less so. They, they're concerned about their ability to develop their land down the road. I asked to come up and speak just because I'm one of the vocal ones that am very supportive of option number two. And I feel, the reason I feel that way is looking at Forge Road. First of all, I don't think the 400 foot setback is a taking of land or depriving the landowners of the use of that land. Because if you drive down the road, the predominance of farms, everything from soybean plantings to horse farms and so on and so forth, the, the property itself is used right up to the fence line, the 75 foot setback. So the owner still has the ability to use that property. But I, I've seen lately, there's some, some houses that are going up at the 400 foot level. And even that is changing the view shed significantly. And so again, I'm just speaking personally for me, but I feel that the, that for every comprehensive plan I've been involved in, over 90% of the citizen surveys advocate protecting the rural vistas. And I think the 400 foot setback does that. Two hundred, even 200 feet, if you look at the Photoshop pictures, in my opinion, show a little more incursion into the view shed. And so as I, my, my bottom line in the discussions at the policy committee has been that it's not a taking of property. It's because already the properties are being used for equine and agricultural purposes right up to the fence line. And, and, and my worry is that as, as more pressure is exerted for some residential growth, that the view shed would change significantly.
So does the same apply with Old Stage? That, to me, they're, they're kind of different.
They, I think you're right, ma'am. They, they are very different properties. Old Stage has a very different view, view shed than Forge Road.
More residentially with larger lots. So some, a point that you brought up was the, the difference in more narrow lots. Are there a lot of variations in the width of lots? I, I guess predominantly, because we had talked about Forge Road a lot, but I'm thinking more in terms of Old Stage. Do you know if there are a lot of variations in the width of lots that this would conflict?
It's not in the width, ma'am, it's the depth. And so when the question was asked about the non-conformance piece is if that house, which is very narrowed, is destroyed and you cannot build it on the same footprint, there's no place to set back on the property depth to be able to build a new place.
So it varies a lot on Old Stage?
Exactly. For, and then the, the second point I wanted to make was when we were talking about the Forge Road piece is there was also consideration for the notion that at some point you may have a rural cluster development on that road. And so you're talking about a 200 acre piece of property with only 20 acres. And in fact, that cluster could be put closer to the road. So that's why we went through this view shed piece of 400 and 200, because we didn't want it encroaching. So it was the degree of development that you may see on Forge Road. But we were divided between Old Stage Road and Forge Road.
Can we not do them separately, take one at a time?
That's what, well, you, you have, it's a agricultural community corridor. So what you do for one, you have to do for the other. And so that's why you see the recommendation of number four of.
Next comp plan.
Right. And so it's a, it's a Sullivan divide the baby type of a situation we're in. So you kick it down the road, then you revise it so that you separate out the Forge Road as a wooded, I mean, not as a wooded, as an agriculture. And then the Old Stage as wooded.
Yeah.
And then, then you can go forward from there. You still have the issue of the setback, but it's really dealing then with the Forge Road.
So on Old Stage, do you know how many lots are left to be built upon out there?
There is three of them on the other end that are large areas of land.
So we're doing all this for, because of three lots?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, what, um, the, by pushing it down the road, it worries me about Forge Road. And everybody knows I'm partial on Forge Road. We don't have many scenic roads like Forge Road left, if we have any, in the county. And, and it's just been how the county's developed and, and changed through the years. It's not a blame of anything, it's just how it's developed. And our first look was at Forge Road. And I know with the CCCs, we had to look at the other, you know, look at Old Stage and that sort of thing. And I thought, well, maybe an overlay district might change that and may look at just Forge Road. I hate to wait for three or four years down the road, because we do it every five years. So three or four years down the road to get to a point where by then we've already got development on Forge Road and we have a cluster up next to the road. It's ruined then, I mean, in my opinion. And you ride down there and, you know, you, you've got the ability to cluster further back in, in a lot of these areas on Forge Road. The beauty of Forge Road is going down there and see the houses are built off the road a little bit, but see the farms, see the activities, see everything going on. And it doesn't seem as important today as it will be 30 or 40 years from now. And then somebody's going to say, I don't know who did it and what happened and what the smart people were that came together to, to put this in place. But, you know, this is, this is something that's unique within our community and you can ride through there and, and see the different activities going on and the different farms that are working and whether it's cows or horses or sheep or, or venues of some sort. It still gives you that unique area. Now, Old Stage doesn't have that with all the houses there. And I definitely wouldn't want to see us put something in place that if I had a house on an acre and a half and my acre and a half didn't go back 400 feet and now I want to rebuild my house or build a new house, now I can't build it. I think those should be in place that if you have a structure there, if we do this on that road, which I'm not as worried about that one as I am Forge Road, but if we did that, I don't want to, that would be me, to me, more of a land taken because I got to keep this house here. I can't redo it and may put a modern house on there. So if I do, then I'm paying taxes on a piece of land I just tore a house down and have no options. So that would be one thing I'd be worried about there. But Forge Road has got enough that's pushed off the road that we've been fairly fortunate to have the older houses and people that have built have slid off the road. And we put some things in place to, to kind of back it up some. So I think Forge Road was our main concern, was at least my main concern, I might, you know, talk to Potty here. But it's my main concern of how do we protect that vista, but not do a land take? And, and Mr. Crawford was right that, you know, you can use that land all the way up and utilize it for, you know, there's a house going in right now that they're going to line, just like across the street, line the driveway with trees. They got a riding ring in the back. They've got areas in, in the front for horses and that sort of thing. It's going to be a beautiful sight when they're done. I mean, it's going to really enhance what we're wanting in that area. And I think that was our biggest thing is how do we preserve Forge Road to look like it looks 50 years from now? Some of these other roads that are built off and there's, there's too many houses up front and built on them and they're too close, we really can't without infringing on those homeowners' rights and saying, well, if you ever tear your house down, you just got a piece of land and grow grass or trees or whatever, but you won't be able to. So that would worry me. But on Ford Road, we have that ability. And I don't want to think, well, what if we, you know, if we cluster, that's great, but we can cluster further back. We can cluster where you don't see the view. Maybe you see a main structure and then the other ones are around it, behind it, that sort of thing. And keep that vista as we go through there. I think that's very important to our community. And I think as we go down the road further, it's going to be very important for all the horse people and farmers that are in that area to have a livelihood different than just having a piece of land and paying tax on it. It gives them that ability to earn some money while they're, you know, enjoying what they're doing. And that's my two cents board and feel free anybody to jump in.
To, to your point.
Yes, sir.
The Forge Road was the one road singled out in the GSA that has initiated this whole process. GSA Land Use 6.3 specifies Forge Road, not alone, but singled it out.
Great, thank you. Appreciate everything too. Thank you.
Could you, can you, your option one is, is a 400 foot setback and then if you have less than 500 feet depth, 75. What happens in, in option two? I, I, I tried to look at this and I said, all right, this is for 200 feet for a lot depth between 200 and one and 500. So I got a 210 foot lot. Now I got a 200 foot setback. I gotta have 10 foot white house. You see what I'm saying? I, I, I don't understand how, when you carved out the rest, everything else seemed pretty straightforward until you got to that little middle part there where you're talking about.
If you had a house built in the 200s, maybe with the front elevation at 201 feet and, and you tore it down for some reason or burnt down and you wanted to rebuild it, you could still rebuild it. I think that's the.
Let me, let me, let me, I'm making the assumption that you got a, a blank piece of property. And you put these in, in, in place. You see what I'm, you see what I'm driving at?
I think you'd have to take a look at the map to be able to see which ones are conforming or non-conforming that fit into that 200 foot piece. And, and that's the issue that in terms of Old Stage Road, you have that problem. But on the Forge Road piece, you don't, except for maybe one or two. I mean, there's a church that sits on Old Ford Road where you couldn't put a parking lot in there because there isn't one now. So that would be non-conforming. And if it came to the board, you would have to say no. Those are isolated cases relative to Ford Road.
Yes, my concern is that, is that option two on both roads gives you a, a larger number of non-conforming structures. Okay? And I, I'm, I'm sort of trying to figure out, you know, I, we seem to, we seem to box ourselves in here because we've got a certain category of, of road and maybe ultimately we want to change that in the comp plan. We don't want to do it right now. I'm not real, I'm not real comfortable with, with, I understand what we're trying to do, but I'm not real comfortable with the concept of option two necessarily because it, you know, I, I just don't, I don't see, first of all, it drives, it drives a lot more of properties into, into non-conformance. And I'm trying to see why, why you favor that as opposed to option one because, and you know.
Just simply to protect people with narrower or less deep properties. And, and as Mr. Polster said, that's mostly along Old Stage Road, not so much Ford Road.
Yeah, Ford Road, you don't have that issue as you do on Old Stage. So, you know, that, that's, and the closer they encroach onto that road, the, the closer it's going to look like every road in James City County.
It comes right down to it and looking at the fact that we have two separate roads with two separate characteristics. I was a little surprised that, that you guys basically said, I know that, that an overlay district requires rezoning all the properties in that overlay district. And that's a bit of a, a work. But if you're trying to target Ford Road as opposed to necessarily Old Stage Road at this point, it would seem to me that the overlay district would probably be one way you can get out, get around this issue of, of applying what you want to one and not having to worry about the other one.
But don't you have to do it to both as to the same category?
No, no, no. If you do, if you do the, my understanding is if you do the overlay district, you can put the overlay district either one. Now, if you're going to go according to the scenic route, the categories of, of the roads based on the comp plan, then yes, you have to do that. And that's, that's, that's sort of the trap that we're, we're caught in because it puts us considering two totally different view sheds and two, two totally different options that at, at one time. And, and it, no, it's, every time you do something for one, it, it, it doesn't work real well for the other one. It seems to me that the solution to get to what you want to do would be to do a, an overlay district on, on Ford Road and then come back to Old Stage Road in the comp plan.
The map here that we just brought back up shows how few, it's hard to read, I know, but how few structures there are on Ford Road within the 400 foot setback. I think it was, it was 31. And the 200 foot setback would, would certainly, would, it would increase that to 36. That's only another five structures.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not a huge amount, but it could have an impact on the, on the scenery.
And I get, I guess, maybe my understanding of when something is non-conforming, if the property hasn't been developed yet, now it's going to have to be developed according to these new standards. But if it's already developed and non-conforming, what level of change triggers a problem for a homeowner? If I owned one of those, it's not conforming. And, you know, it burns down and we have to rebuild it. That's one, that's one scenario that you talked about. But let's say what, I'd say, I just want to take it and I want to, I want to add a, a wing with a bedroom or a sunroom or something like that. And, and, and can't do it. So what you're doing is you're, you're really constraining, in my mind, you're really constraining somebody's ability to, to deal with the property that, by making it non-conforming.
I can address a little bit of the non-conforming. When something comes non-conforming, obviously it's grandfathered. If it was burnt down due to a lightning strike or something, a, a natural, then they have actually 24 months in order to reconstruct it as it was. So there is some, some leeway if something happens by natural. Now, if they wanted to add on another wing, that might be a variance option. So they would have to apply to the Board of Zoning Appeals, show a hardship, so forth. And then the Board of Zoning Appeals could approve or deny a variance in that aspect.
There, there are methods for the property owners we would be impacting.
Correct.
To have some sort of relief because to me, that's really critical. Because if you, if you, otherwise you're, you're really hamstringing people who own properties out there already that are, that would, we would be making non-conforming.
There's a very narrow variance criteria in which the board is supposed to, you know, adhere to. So like, for example, overlapping setbacks. So if you had a 250 foot depth lot and someone was like, oh my gosh, you know, now I have a 200 foot setback and I've got RPA on the back of the property, that in my mind is a hardship and it's an easier case to give to the Board of Zoning Appeals to.
That's exactly the question, the issue I was trying to get at with the 200 feet.
Yes.
And, and you know, where you could, you could constrain the property to where it becomes not worth anything.
Right, so there are avenues for variances through the board, through our ordinance.
So you mentioned that if, if they could show a hardship to add a, a wing or something like that, but what if 24 months simply isn't enough time? I mean, just because you have a fire, it doesn't mean you necessarily are insured or that you have enough insurance to rebuild the home. What about that?
There would be guidelines where you would have to pull a building permit. And as long as the building permit was active. There would be guidelines where you would have to pull a building permit and as long as the building permit was active, that can go beyond that 24 months.
Oh, yeah. I got a house in my neighborhood that's been built for 30 years. So I know that to be true.
But if that is the case then, and say the building permit expires and everything kinda goes, you know, down the, the wrong path, then the variance option could be another avenue that the citizen could pursue.
Then how do we address, how do we, I'm still a little conflicted with, as what Mr. Eisenhower was talking about, the total difference in these two corridors, one being ag, one being wooded. It seems a little, um, I'm sorry? Yeah, but we were talking, right, I get that. But we were talking about the characteristics. One is far more wooded than the other being ag-producing, I guess you could say. I, I'm still a little conflicted on how we rubber stamp, put it all in one box whenever, when they're different. And your, your view is gonna be different anyway, just because of the way it is laid out. I, I, I'm really, I'm struggling and I understand the Forge Road part. I think we've talked about that for a long time. But to lump Old Stage in, I, I'm a little, I've got a little bit of angst about it. I'm trying to work my way through that.
I'd like to come back to this issue because it's what, the issue that Mr. Eisenhower raised on the overlay district that we did talk about. Now, I'm gonna defer to the county attorney because it wasn't a recommended approach, which is why there was a consensus on the policy committee not to recommend that approach. Uh, if you would, Adam, would you like to tell us a little bit about that problem?
Um, quite frankly, I wouldn't. It's something I can discuss with the board later though.
But I, but I will. Um, I, I have, you, Mr. Eisenhower asked about overlay districts in our, our discussion about it and I finally found the notes on it. Uh, the overlay district is a potential tool that could be utilized to establish unique development standards for a specific corridor within the county. Unlike the proposed setback idea, which requires the same standards be applied for classes of roadway, such as open agricultural or wooded CCCs, the overlay district concept could be applied on a corridor-by-corridor basis. An overlay district created on a corridor basis would allow standards to be created only for Forge Road or for Old Stage Road or any other road selected by the board. Planning staff reviewed peer localities to determine if there were similar examples of overlay districts being established solely for rural preservation on a corridor-by-corridor basis. The research shows that counties with large lot and rural preservation standards in their zoning ordinances tend not to have comparable standards for protecting the view sheds from rural roads. Other than basic front setback requirements. The most pertinent examples from staff's research for rural preservation are the method employed by Albemarle County and Clark County. Uh, both, both use a state code provision, da, 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 that allows for localities to establish an overlay district with design standards and regulations through a review board for corridors that are included in or lead to any historic areas as defined by state code or roadways found to be significant routes of tourist access to the county. The establishment of an overlay district would require the county to initiate the rezoning of every parcel located within the proposed district, which would be hundreds of parcels, could be hundreds of parcels, depending on the size of the proposed district. This would require the typical rezoning process with public hearings. Staff finds that a tiered approach to the overlay district in which each road is considered based on its own character and citizen input could be an effective tool for preserving certain roads deemed scenic within the county. However, an overlay district may be more appropriate tool for a goal strategies in action that focuses on one area or corridor for a specific purpose. And staff recommends continuing the setback approach in order to protect a broader set of scenic roads, which is the intent of the GSA in the comprehensive plan. The policy committee discussed the possibility of an overlay district as a potential tool for accomplishing this strategy, but does not recommend this approach at this time.
So the, the two, the, the two, um, roads we're looking at, old, uh, state, you know, Forge Road and Old Stage Road are the only two that are in that category in the county? So if we're looking at, at setbacks, uh, that, those are the only two they would apply to?
That's correct, for setbacks. Uh, Mr. Hippel mentioned Dyoskin Road a couple of meetings ago. You could do an overlay district for that, but it, it's not a a CCC, uh, open agricultural, so it couldn't be included.
Are the citizens, have they been made aware that this discussion is taking place?
Uh, not beyond the advertisement for the policy committee meeting.
Can I just ask a couple of quick questions? Um, one is, uh, any of the land, particularly on Old Stage, but generally in AFD?
Some, some of it is, yes.
I, I, cause I, I just wonder in terms of whether, um, you know, if, if we need to do something about Old Stage at, uh, the next comprehensive plan, maybe some of that land is already sort of committed for the next few years anyway. Um, and the second question I have is, um, are we wedded to the, to these kind of double zero numbers? Is there a way, is, is, when you actually look at the properties, is there a way to kind of address some of this, um, concern about, uh, you know, kind of constraining people too much by moving to a, you know, 175 feet or, or, uh, you know, 250 feet or, or?
We didn't, we didn't get there. Um, that's not to say it's not a bad idea, but, um, we didn't.
Right. Yeah. I, I, so I just, I just wondered about that. I mean, I guess, I think, uh, my general conclusion is that, uh, uh, I agree with Mr. Crawford about the, um, the desirability of, of that particular, uh, option. But just wonder maybe whether there's a way to fine tune this a little bit and get a, a little bit more sense of something that might produce less of an impact.
By less of an impact, you mean a non-conforming?
Right.
Structures? I, I would just mention that when we did the simulations of 75, 200 and 400, it was an idea to be able to see if there was something in between.
Was there a natural cut there at those, at those numbers?
It, it ended up being, uh, the perception of, do you want it? For what you saw, the 400 feet was preferred by at least one member. One member said, none at all. The other one said, let's cut the baby in half. And the third, the fourth member said, I'm not sure. And so, I mean, we've been at this thing since December of last year. We've come back to you once before. We've taken on your guidance and we're back here kind of at the same place we were before with kind of the same sort of options. And, and we're just running out of ways to be able to move this thing forward, which is why we asked for this to be placed on the agenda, for you to tell us what you'd like us to do.
Cause the, the most logical piece seems to be to wait until we do the comprehensive plan again, but then there's the risk that we take in the meantime on Forge Road, I guess with the three. But then back to the question that was, how, what, what are the statuses of those lots now, anyway, right now? We don't know that.
Well, I know there are some large out-of-town buildings. Some of them are in town. Looking through that area right now. And they're looking for large tracks because they're saying it's easier to put them on a larger track than it is some of the smaller ones that they're trying to deal with. You know, and, and some of them are already divided down Ford Road a little bit further. You've got some already divided lots as you go down, um, Little Creek Dam. And, um, so we're seeing more and more encroachment onto the roads. And, you know, I don't mind it on, on certain roads and all this, but this is one we could actually save. I feel that for the future of our kids and all that, that we won't have the road, the houses encroaching on the road. And you've got all that green space and field behind it. And you're going down the road and it's just every other road in USA. Why can't we be different? Why can't we stand up and, and say, you know what, some things are just worth saving? And, um, you know, and, and I think if we, if it, I would go with option two. I would like to have Forge Road cut out from Old Stage and I know where we're at right now. I don't wanna wait for the comp plan because something could happen between then and now. Everybody knows. Hopefully nothing will, but it could. And, um, you know, I've been banging this drum for quite some time now on that road and, and even before I lived on that side. And, um, traveled the road with the fire department and everything else. And it's just a beautiful road that is really, the neighbors and all down there have really taken good care of their properties and what they're doing and everything else. And I'm like all our citizens in James City County, take care of their properties and, and, um, if we can keep them off the road, I don't know if there's a, if there is, there's only one or two 200-foot lots in there. Do y'all know if there's with depths of?
On Forge Road?
On Forge Road, just Forge Road? There might be one up on the left.
Your slide, number four again, please, sorry. There are, you, you see the pink?
Yes.
400 feet.
But that lot, most of the lots go back further, except for one, two, two of them, is it?
That would be where the 200 feet, uh, applies.
The pink ones are?
Right. But you still got lot lines behind it, so they could, that lot's able to be built on. It's not just a 200-foot lot. I think the only one is, is right in the curve. Is that, is that what I'm looking at there? Looks like one or two right there may be affected.
So for, for Forge Road, there are 10 parcels that would be considered shallow. And then two of them would fall under that 75-foot. Two of them are shallow. So I think you got it correct.
Okay.
And then there's one that looks like a lot. It's kinda hard to tell. It's actually VDOT right-of-way.
Right.
On the curve. It looks just like.
Pond.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it looks just like a parcel, but it's, it's right-of-way. So two is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, and, um, you know, I don't wanna do anything that would harm those two, you know, and, and limit them. And those may be the two that are allowed to be grandfathered of some sort in there and protect the rest of it. Yes, sir.
Got another option here that could work, okay? So you approve this for the Forge Road, for whatever it is, 400 feet or whatever, and you apply it to both of them, okay? Next comp plan, you come back and you take out Old Stage out of the ag and put it into the wooded and it reverts back.
Okay.
And that was what I just asked Paul about.
Okay.
So there is another option that may work. And I'll, I'll leave that to the county attorney and to the planning director to tell you yes or no on this wild-ass idea. I'm sorry.
Will it work?
On this what?
On this wild idea.
Oh, that's what I thought you said.
So we can move it forward, then come back at the comp plan and, and change Old Stage?
I think it works in concept. I mean, obviously we wanna flesh that out in, in, uh, the black and white text a little bit more to make sure in application that that's what gets delivered, should you make that change to the comp plan in another three or four years.
What happens if it doesn't get changed?
And what happens to the people in the meantime?
Correct.
Some say there's a catastrophe.
So I have, I have a question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I guess I'm, I'm just trying to, well, go ahead.
I think we're as conflicted as you guys have been. I, I think we're going, I'm just, I almost feel like I need to sit down with Mr. Kinsman since he seems to be the pivot point of a lot of this. Talk to him, talk to him. And we can't really talk to him right now. I'm wondering if we could just, could we possibly just postpone this? And so we can get a little bit more information, since some of it rides on his advice?
Is there a way to re, is, rezone the, is there a way to do something with the three properties we're concerned about on Forge Road until the next comp plan?
Um, so again, so the idea that you would maybe change the ordinance to apply greater setbacks to Forge Road and not to Old Stage, you would either be, you know, looking at, uh, a comp plan change in another couple of years or through with a overlay district?
Right.
Would be the shortest.
So you couldn't just go in and pick on those three lots?
Uh, it would be something we'd have to look at in consultation. I mean, normally it would be a whole corridor if, you know, for us to do a shorter corridor that would potentially only maybe get three lots. We'd, again, we'd need some time to really vet that.
Yeah, could we look at that?
Well, if it, if we do this and it's a heartache on those three, can't they be grandfathered in this as far as, you know, that way you could still use your lot?
Again, it would be. It would just depend on what the certain circumstance would be and if a variant, if the need for variance would kick in.
So if, if we gave the planning commission to go ahead to look at Forge Road to do the option two with the 400 setback and the 200 and, and also look at the options of, is there a way to protect those two lots that are limited on the amount of space they have to meet this requirement? Cause we don't wanna make it so that somebody's lot is not buildable since they just have a small lot. And, um, so if we sent those marching orders out to, hey, come up with a thing here, maybe we have to put, you know, and it'll, it'll be up to y'all to come back and bring it to us. But maybe we put them both in with the ability to take Old Stage out and during the comp plan, the next comp plan, we take it back out and that way it wouldn't affect Old Stage. And it won't affect anything as far as if the house catches on fire or anything else. It's just the lots that, which are very few lots that are able to build but have to build further back.
And so there's how many lots on Old Ford, on Ford Road you're talking about?
There's two.
And there were how, so, and then how many are on Old Stage? You said three?
Uh, no, I don't think they've told us on.
That were left undeveloped? Are these that you're talking about on, on Forge? They haven't been developed either. Is that correct? Or are they just non-conforming?
They haven't been developed. One of the three on Ford is the pit for the VDOT. That, that's never gonna build anyhow.
But then on Old Stage, you had three, I believe you said, that hadn't been developed yet? Was that?
Parcels that you see on the map on the upper, uh, top portion of the graphic?
That could be resumbed, divided.
Right. Then the nice property that's down in the bottom right, uh, isn't, uh, in play because they also own that purple area there. So it's not impacted with that, uh, land of the right, which is a nice property.
But what's the acreage of the two parcels up at the top? Do we know?
I don't remember offhand, but they're about 100 or something like that.
We'd have to verify that.
So they could divide it up to where you'd end up with the 1 to 20 taken, kicking in? Then you would end up with five houses, maybe?
Potentially, depending on lot width and depth and setbacks and everything else.
But in that 1 to 20, they can utilize that setback as part of that 20 acres.
Correct.
You know, they can't build in it, but they can utilize that as their 20 acres. Have to just build back further.
Much like Forge Road, if you had really long flag stems or something else, that's where that would, that's where that would work to your favor on there.
So it's not limiting. It's just, it's limiting being able to put them on the road as close and as tight. You're, you're, you're not limiting, okay, I can never build on it. I just have to build differently on it.
I'd like to move this ahead somehow or another. Uh, and, and what I think I'd, I'd like to ask is if we can see if there is, um, I, I don't necessarily assume we're gonna have unanimity, but at least, uh, uh, preference for, uh, option number two. Uh, with an understanding that, uh, we wanna find more information out about Old Stage so that we can see whether, for instance, it's already locked in, uh, an undevelopable state, uh, um, as a result of being in an AFD for the next several years or any other, um, kinda considerations of that kind. But I, I wanna, I don't want the planning commission, uh, to leave today without a sense of what we would like them to do if we can, if we can express that.
I don't think.
I would think Forge Road and Old Stage, I would think option two. And, um, you know, that also see if we can, if there's any way to pull out Old Stage and maybe come back with us as far as what this really affects on, on Old Stage more than, I don't think it's that much on Old Stage that affects more than three pieces of parcels. Um, the rest are pretty much protected or built. Um, but I also think that we ought to have something in there to, an avenue that if I wanna take a house and I wanna add on to it, I should have that ability. You know, and I know we can get variances and that sort of thing and show that. But I don't know if there's a way to put that in there that existing structures have that, have these avenues to pursue. We have the variance. Yes, ma'am.
What, what I failed to mention, and depending on in addition, we wanna make sure that nothing is more non-conforming than what it is. nothing is more non-conforming than what it is. So if someone wanted to design the addition to go on the back of the house, you're not encroaching anymore onto that new setback. That might have an option that we can administratively approve that. And if they wanted to put it on the side of the house, then it's a question that it's going to be more into that front setback. So it's all going to be depending on the design, which is why I didn't mention it because then we kind of get in the nuts.
Right.
And, and crannies a little bit. But there are options about how something is designed that we could do it administratively. But it's really going forward and making something really larger that makes it a more non-conforming that would have to be a variance.
So what if it was on the same footprint but, but a two-story house instead of a one?
We'd have to look at it independently, but that is a possible option, but we want to make sure that nothing encroaches more into that front setback. So going up might be an option or even kind of leave it back a little bit, but we would always recommend that if something was back, then we could do that administratively.
Yeah. That's some options.
When is the next comp plan cranking up?
Three years from now?
No.
At least.
Oh.
Couple of years.
So these people on Old Stage are in limbo?
Well, I, I think the request that I'm hearing is there may be a consensus for staff in the policy committee to bring back a little bit more detailed information about what option two would really mean for Old Stage Road and will further sort of categorize that to vacant lots and for those that already have structures on them. We'll bring you back that more information.
But we're good to move on forward? We have to do them together?
You have to do them together, unless you move to an overlay district, you'd have to do them together.
Are that our marching orders, that's what everybody feels?
So that means we're doing what?
Nothing, you're just sending us off to bring you back more, more information and more analysis.
Happy with that. Adam, I'll be calling you.
Meeting date to be determined.
So can I, can I just ask?
Yes, sir.
If, if there's, if, if there is agreement that um, you know, ideally, this option two is what we would like to see on Forge Road?
Yes.
Old Stage is holding me up.
I understand that, yeah, right. Um, so that's why we want more information about that, but I, but I, I just don't want to leave them hanging.
No.
Uh, here and, and uh, I think uh we want to get to a resolution as quickly as we can.
Yes.
Okay.
They've got other things to do if they've been working on this this long, so.
Okay, so I think, I hope that's a clear direction.
Clear as mud.
Thank you very much. I work for what you're looking for. Mr. Chairman, I work for what your group is.
Yeah, I, I'm happy that we're going to go and focus on two.
Okay.
Okay? And the, with the notion that the next comp plan, that we'd fix the uh Old Stage Road, but we need to come back and address your concerns on Old Stage Road in terms of specifically which properties are impacted and how do we protect them with a consideration of the 1 to 20 and what that would mean for the specific lots. So, so we'll take a look at that and then be able to come, come back to you hopefully for a decision.
Thank you.
Hopefully. It's our goal. All right, with that, we will move on to our second topic for the, uh, this afternoon and.
Oh, yeah, this is a lot easier.
Oh, yes, Breeze.
Uh, as the board will recall, the adopted comprehensive plan guidance um for short-term rentals provides forward development standards for consideration. Uh, the commission and the board, however, do have uh very much a lot of discretion as each case's particular circumstances are reviewed. Since the adoption of the comprehensive plan, the planning commission and board have considered several short-term rental applications. And again, as mentioned, each application was considered in part based on the criteria listed here on your screen. As part of the discussions of these cases, discussion has also occurred on the policy criteria itself, both at the commission level and at the board level, including but not limited to the need to have such land uses be located only on a major road and whether the availability of a caretaker or designated representative who is available nearby is a factor favorable in lieu of a property owner living and residing on the property during the rental. If there were a desire to have additional or clarifying guidance or text prior to the comprehensive plan update in a couple more years, um, options could include a board policy or alternatively zoning ordinance amendments to possibly include review of which districts even allow short-term rentals, either by right with an S U P or possibly those districts that don't allow them at all. Um, with that, I'll flip the screen and turn it over to Mr. Paulster.
Can we go back to the last slide, please? That, that slide was just to be able to show you what we've took, taken a look at since the comp plan guidance that we put in place. But the reason I wanted to come back with this is that, a, as you know, we struggle with each one of these short-term rentals each time uh because we're concentrated and on the specific guidance that we have in the comp plan that you see down below there. Uh, but over time, I think uh that we've seen that the board has given us some guidance and thanks to Mr. Kinsman, that the whole idea of the um short-term rental being in perpetuity to the S U P, you've given us a policy now that allows you to go back every five years and review that to see if there's any kind of compliance or non-compliance to that. And that's made quite a bit of a difference in terms of how we look at these things because we know that it's not forever and ever on it. The second thing that's happened, and it's kind of a more of a recent thing, is in that last item that you see there where the owner to operate and be on-site. Well, we've had several cases where in fact, uh, a property manager close by or a neighbor, and we've taken that in lieu of the owner being actually there. And you're going to see one of those cases coming up in front of the board here at your next uh meeting. So there's been a little bit of a change in terms of, are we protecting the neighborhood? Is there somebody looking for it? And does it really necessarily mean that the owner has to be there? And so that's kind of a change that we've seen uh for. I, I'd say that uh the next piece that we've seen uh is that um when you look at the number of short-term rentals that we've taken a look at and you start to add them up and see where they are. And then we have another one that's coming to you with two uh rentals that were non-conforming that had to apply. You'll see that, that along the uh, I'm sorry, I can't remember the road right now, um, a concentration of short-term rentals.
Lake Powell?
Lake Powell Road. And so the, the issue that came up as we listened to that one was not only the short-term rentals, but also the number of long-term rentals that were associated in that area. So the concern that was brought up is are we changing the character of the neighborhood? Now, one of the things that we still have in front of us is that there were something like 38 that we found that were non-conforming to the short-term rentals. And I understand that out of, out of the 38, we're probably only going to see maybe six of those come for short-term rentals because they've changed to long-term rentals uh for. So we're still looking to see what the overall impact is on the neighborhood and whether or not the guidance that we have there needs to be modified, as I pointed out in two of the cases, it has. Uh, so from that point of view, uh, I would say that it's like some of the other things we've done, we're kind of evolving. I mean, the whole idea of the short-term rental is a relatively new thing, at least for James City County uh for, and we're trying to see what that impact is and what are the circumstances that you want to see that approved. Right now, I think the guidance that we have will work, and as we go through the next year or two before the next comp plan, I think you'll see probably a better focusing on whether or not this is working or not, or whether or not there's more adjustments that you would like to see made or maybe suggested by the county attorney for that. So that's kind of where we are. I'd be happy to take any questions or discussions that you may have on the issue.
Questions?
It's a very tough, it's, it's just very, I mean, when they come to us, I always, first thing I go to when I have one is I open up the, the notes from, that you all have done when you've done your meetings and it's just a very, you know, none of these are really, you know, I understand the Lake Powell Road and that is definitely, you know, that's an older road with, you know, maybe prior before subdivisions in the county, so you need, but you've still got to take into consideration the people that have invested their hard, you know, their, their time and effort into theirs. It's just a very, it's a very tough subject. I know there's now, there's a, one of the, I think it's maybe VRBO, they advertise that you get the whole house. So, I mean, they make it very clear that if you are renting from them, there's no one else in that house. There's not a caretaker or an owner there, um, because I think there's been issues, you know, some, sometimes maybe um in other parts.
Michael's uncle being there.
And part of the other parts of the country where, you know, so, I mean, I appreciate everything that y'all have done for them and it's, I think we're, we're, yeah, we're still going to be dealing with it.
I will say that in this last review that we did, uh, we've also been very concerned about short-term rentals and taking uh properties off the market in terms of affordable housing. Uh, the flip side of that, that we saw this last time, was people are using this as an opportunity to supplement their income in order to be able to retain their homes. And so there's another reason for people to want to do this, to make some additional money so that they can keep their houses. So it, it, each one of these has an emotional piece to it when you listen to the, uh, the stories of the folks and trying to apply those uh guidance pieces that we have in a strict manner, sometimes it becomes rather tough.
Because every situation is different.
Exactly, as well as the location is different and the circumstances for it. So the, the context of where this is being asked for makes a huge difference.
And it's, it's, it's tough because you've, you've got the house that's going to rent a room, and you got the house that's going to rent the entire house, and then you got the bed and breakfast. So you're, you know, you've got several different ones and some think it's all the same thing. Um, I know with ours, we rent the entire house, so, you know, there's, there's no one there. And when I go to Nag's Head to rent a place on the beach, I rent the entire house and I don't have Uncle Fester down there in the back room, you know, making sure that everything isn't, you know, taken care of or we're not doing something. And so, you know, having somebody necessary, which I'm glad we're changing, having somebody necessarily thinking that, okay, somebody needs to live there on the property, I'm not as concerned about because it, if anything happens, we get a phone call right away. I mean, hey, where are the paddles to the canoe? Well, they're under the canoe. And, you know, some people will flip it over and realize that they're there. Um, but they ask us those questions as, you know, and um, and I've noted, I've talked to a lot of Airbnb, Airbnb people and others that, you know, they've, there's really not a, just like down Nag's Head, there's not an issue as far as people not being able to get a hold of somebody and not being able to figure out what's going on, and you get graded with that. And um how quick you're responding, how much they know, how location. And with location, I'm worried too because if somebody's got a, a road off another road that goes to a main road, but they're really not VDOT roads, it could be considered, well, you're really not on a main road, even though technically you are and you aren't because, you know, the road comes in and splits, well, this road may be on the main road, but this road may not be. And so that may change some stuff as far as, and I think basically it's more, what you were saying earlier, was you have to take it piece by piece and, and, and application by application. Does this fit in this area? Is it a neighborhood? Is it not a neighborhood? Do we have responsive people that are going to take care of it? The five-year limit now gives that another bite of that apple later, which, you know, I know a lot of people had a problem with that. Okay, this is with the land forever unless somebody changes it, so it gives you another bite. Have they been good neighbors to all their people and, and watched everything, done everything they should? Okay, you get another five years and you just keep coming back every five years, which I don't have a problem with, with that. Um, biggest thing is, you know, living on-site or have be somewhat near. Now, if they're living out of the county or out of the state, I could see where that could be. You know, somebody living in Florida that's got an Airbnb here, unless they have somebody running it here, then it might be an issue. Um, but most of the, most of the rentals I've run into and seen have been pretty conscientious because it's a livelihood for them and it's another income. The, the fact of, you know, I've heard it mentioned a couple times where you're taking inventory that may be for workforce housing. Well, usually the, those are set up very nice and taken care of very well and all that and would be past that threshold of what you would consider affordable for workforce housing. So that really may be one or two on a rare occasion might be that. I was glad to see that we went around and, and said, hey, we need to get everybody in compliance and go through this process and look at it. I know part of the county, if you have an Airbnb, you can have Airbnb without coming to us. So there, there's another issue there as far as they're allowed in certain areas and S U P and other areas. And um, so y'all have got a very tough job of trying to figure out where are we, what are we doing, how are we moving this forward? I think they're a very critical part of the community now that wasn't five years ago in James City County. And I know one couple that they bought a camper, they rent their entire house out and they travel around the country and homeschool their children and take them to the sites that they're homeschooling while the house is being rented, and when it's not rented, they come back to stay in the house. So, you know, it, it, it gives us benefits for the, the owners, so it is a plus there, but there's a lot to deal with as far as making sure it fits in the community in that spot. Thank you.
I had a question for staff, if I could. Um, but just a reminder, there are places that you ha, you are allowed to do it by right, but you still have to get a business license and pay the tax, correct?
Absolutely.
That's right. So that, are we still, um, I know that we had contracted with a company to make sure that, or is that something that's ongoing?
It is, yes.
So.
We're getting about weekly, every bi-weekly updates.
Right.
For those listings.
Okay.
So we're able to keep up with it.
Okay, that's great. So, okay, thank you.
Questions and directions?
On slide.
Well, I, I, I would have to say that as I look at the list of, of approvals that have been granted, um, by and large, they are what I would refer to as workforce housing. Um, there are, there are a handful that are not, but uh, but the others uh pretty well are. And, and my concern is that, you know, um, that uh these are dribs and drabs, but what we've been able to do in terms of workforce housing sometimes have been dribs and drabs as well. Uh, and uh it just gets, it gets a, a lot more challenging. You know, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with somebody who is trying to um be able to afford their house by, by dealing with this, but, you know, what, what I hear more often is, I want, you know, so now I've got this house going, now I want another one, and then I'm going to have, have another one over here and so forth. And that then starts to say to me, yeah, and we're going to have a harder and harder time finding those starter homes that people are relying on.
So just a question, and I, and I don't, I mean, no disrespect, I, because I know that you've brought this up before when we've discussed this. How do we say 27, 2878 Monticello, we're going to deny you because we think this is a good workforce housing home? How do we keep 2878 from selling that? Because the, the sad reality is that house may be worth $250,000, but they can sell it right now cash, somebody will walk away, give them $400,000, and then it, it doesn't even become an Airbnb, it becomes a, a non-workforce housing house. So how do we get there?
Yeah, well, I, I don't know how we get there exactly, but it does seem to me that uh it is, it is a problem when we see more and more of those houses that have been available for people at a lower rate, um disappearing uh without the, being sold to somebody else.
If I can comment, one, one of the things that's concerned me is uh seeing somebody come back for a second or even a third time for an Airbnb. And so in some cases, we've invoked the idea.
Or one homeowner who has multiple properties.
Right, exactly. So the, the first question that comes up in your mind, is this a commercial venture? So should we treat them like a hotel or should we restrict it to a zoning area? Okay, which is what we do with the, we say about the short-term rentals for commercial areas. Uh, so it, it really has um concerned me that when you start to see that, is it really uh an Airbnb, a rental for an individual, or is somebody trying to come up and say, okay, we're going to now go into the resort business and do this? Uh, and so that kind of concerns me in moving to that because it gets to your point uh for. So I don't know the answer to that, but I do know that we're going to see cases like that, and we did have one where they wanted to put three. And so you're going to see a rather robust conversation at the planning commission over those issues uh for, and you'll get to come back and, and decide yourself. And then from our own experiences there, you may be able to give us some guidance in terms of what you want us to do. And that's why I, I've kind of said this before, we're kind of, don't know what we don't know. don't know about short-term rentals. And we're kind of figuring it out as we're going along, which is where we are. And so I would hope over the next two or three years before we get to the next comp plan, that we'll have enough data up here to be able to tell you and be able to say, okay, hey, it looks like we're impacting the quality of a neighborhood. Maybe we need to relook at this thing in terms of the roads or whatever. Or you may say, provide us with additional guidance. But at this point, I think we're still trying to figure it out.
Well, rather than putting everything again in one box, is it something, and I think we've kind of been doing this anyway, case by case with general guidelines, and then all of these other things are applied to it, as you've been saying, that you look at as you're considering each case. I, I, I would hate to lump everything together, especially when you, if you're looking at affordable housing, the market is, it's all over the place. So with the market changing constantly, how do you put a hardcore number on what's considered affordable at any given time? So I.
Well, I, I will say this is that, that you won't see a common agreement from all of us on each of these cases.
Yeah, we've seen.
Far from us.
Right, right. Well, but, but the thing is, is that, that the, the group of planning commissioners have different perspectives. And it's in that conversation that you go through where you actually try to get to the context and then apply. And on that piece, I, I welcome any comments from any of the planning commissioners, Tim, Rich?
I tried to be quiet today, so. Good afternoon. I, I think for me, you know, we have two challenges. If we go back to the original intent, right, part of our comp plan says we want to offer full-time employment with benefits and the tourism industry is a big part of that. So when we're looking at hotels, they're offering full-time employment with benefits for the most part. Secondly, when we talk about affordable or workforce or affordable housing, for me, it's really about location, right? When we put a home inside a PUD, so except for the condos at Kings Mill down by the resort, those are, those have, they're hotel districts, so they can be short-term rentals. But a Ford's Colony, a governor's land, a Stonehouse, a Colonial Heritage, all those have PUDs, we're not going to, their governing documents won't permit short-term rentals. So we've removed that much of the housing stock already from, from what's available out there for workforce or affordable housing. Because I would argue that the monthly fees that go with a PUD make a home less affordable. So again, for me, that big issue becomes, we're competing as short-term rentals and workforce housing for the same geographic market, which is outside of a PUD and doesn't incur the additional costs of, of a homeowners association. So just wanted to offer that piece up.
Question. A lot of the affordable housing that we're looking for, we always try to find them on or anything that we can do with it on a, a route, you know, like up.
A bus route?
Yeah, up at our area and your area, you know. If you're in Lenexa, you know, unless you have transportation and that sort of thing, you know, some of the affordable housing that we're thinking about wouldn't work in some of these areas. Some of them work and work real well, but, and, and John made a comment and, you know, that, that the, taking these structures out, you know, but if somebody has three or four or five, now if they have them on different parcels, I'm okay with it. If they're building a commune, I begin to worry that it might be something more than having a house here and a house there that, that they're renting out. And I, isn't that the American dream to be able to, be able to build yourself up? I mean, not go, well, I'm not going to build, buy that house because it could be affordable and I'm not going to move myself forward because that might be affordable, so I'm not going to buy that. I think it's the American dream to go, if I can afford it and move my family further up the road and do things, well, then that's what all of us have done. That's why we're here. And so that, you know, I think that's part of it. But the other thing too with the short-term rentals is if I rent a home to somebody full-time, they're apt to tear it up more. Doesn't matter who they are. They're gonna, it's not theirs, they haven't paid for it. If it's short-term rental, they're keeping it a lot cleaner, they're keeping it a lot because they're going to be graded on that. If they're renting, and I've got houses that are rented by the year, and when someone move out, I might have to take and redo the entire house. Airbnb, they come in, except for changing sheets and that sort of thing, there's really not any, any destruction. So, you know, it's a, it's a balancing act that the owner has to deal with as well. What's the best interest for the house to keep up? Because, you know, that Airbnb, I'm paying Airbnb taxes, county taxes, the, the property taxes and everything else. There's a big volume of taxes that I pay coming into the county, which is a benefit and I'm, I have no problem with that. And, but also I've got to have the ability to, to buy or sell what I need to in order to have those taxes that I can pay to count. So it's a, it's, it's really a hard position because you're in a catch-22 on both sides of the fence. And it's very tough on y'all's side to, to try to figure, okay, where is that delicate balance between property rights and what somebody should have and helping somebody that needs a hand up? And so I think that's what we're all trying to balance is, how do we balance those two?
Well, as somebody who's worked about 20 years in the hospitality industry, industry in James City County, I can tell you, and then we heard it in, in the comp plan update or the comp plan rewrite we recently did from folks who are at Stonehouse, that their, the Stonehouse Commerce Park, their employees don't live in James City County, so they have to come in from outside the county. Having spent 15 years at Kings Mill, you know, our, our employees were coming from as far as Gloucester, New Kent, Newport News to get to work. So I don't find transportation to be as big a barrier as, as we think it is because most of them have cars, but they're either carpooling to work or in some cases, they do catch the bus. And I just think that, anecdotally, I was at church last week and 30-year-old kid that used to work for me put an offer in on a house, it was under 300 grand, you know, somebody came in and outbid them with cash by over 20% and they're turning it into an Airbnb. So if our comp plan tells us we want to keep our young people here and find a place to employ them and have them live here, then, you know, that's some of the balance we're up against.
Yeah, and that's, and, and I agree, but that's also, you know, the, the American dream as far as in place. I mean, and when I worked at Colonial Williamsburg 40 years ago, we had people traveling everywhere. And James City County wasn't expensive then, 40 years ago as it is now. And we were having people coming from Carolina, from Charles City, from New Kent, some in James City County, and I worked with them. So it's, it hadn't changed. The only thing that changed are the people that are, are discussing it now like us. We were the young kids then and now we're the guys and gals that are supposed to have the answers and, and it's amazing, 40 years, we haven't conquered that question, which is not.
I'll make one, one parting comment. I think the thing that we do need to be concerned about is, is that corporate ownership, you know, who's coming in and buying up multiple properties and.
I agree.
And that, that is a challenge. So I don't know how you separate that off from somebody who has two or three versus 10. So I'll let, I'll let Mr. Crop speak, so.
I think that's definitely something we need to look into.
Absolutely. I just saw a report today that one out of every four houses purchased in the United States last year was purchased by a corporation.
Wow.
Yes, sir.
Afternoon.
Welcome. And I, I agree with Mr. O'Connor in the sense that we need to prevent corporate ownership and whether or not it's in our purview to limit the number of short-term rental SUPs that could be issued to a person, I don't know. But I, my, my feeling is that there is a niche for short-term rentals in the, the community. And, and I'd even argue that it could actually boost tourism. Some, a lot of people maybe prefer, families especially, if they visit here, they might want to bring their own food, prepare their own meals and still go out and, you know, pay admission prices and, and do other activities. So I, I think it is a niche. I, I know when, when my family and I have traveled, we've looked for short-term rentals just for that additional privacy. But, and I think the performance standards that, that were outlined in the, in the comprehensive plan, most of them are really good in that they are trying to, to preserve the integrity of residential neighborhoods, which is why we're saying a short-term rental needs to be on the perimeter of a residential development and along a main road and off-street parking and so on and so forth. Because I think that's one of the issues, at least from my vantage point, that generated the discussion a number of years ago, was that we saw some short-term rental applications and, and oftentimes senior citizen residents of neighborhoods expressing concern that they didn't want their neighborhood to become transient from safety and security standpoints. And I understand that. And I think personally, again, most of these performance standards are, are geared to protecting neighborhood integrity. But I do, the one, the one issue that I've had problems with is requiring the homeowner to, or agent to live on the property. And as Mr. Hippel said, so many of them you see nowadays in the area, Nag's Head and other places, the homeowner isn't there. But I'd feel more comfortable with saying that the, that an SUP applicant should, if, if they're not within a reasonable distance of the rental property or reasonably accessible, that they have an agent that's reasonably accessible, rather than requiring them to actually live in the premises. And that's just from my personal standpoint, that's where I've been falling on some of these cases that have come forward. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my opinion on that.
Thank you. I had a question for staff in regards, and I don't know if you can answer this or not, but I assume when hotels come in here and build, they undergo a fire inspection, a safety inspection, or do we do the same with short-term rentals?
There is a different certificate of occupancy that's needed and as part of that, it's checked for fire, fire alarms and those types of things.
Do they, are they inspected annually?
I don't believe so.
So it could have a fire and it could be not in working order? But it's, it's, it's done initially, but not the second time?
Correct, because we don't have a, it's, it's not something that happens as part of that annual process. It's only at the time of certificate of occupancy.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have an estimate of, I, I know, Paul, you've been working with a contractor who, who checks on the availability or the offerings of short-term rentals. Do we have any sense of what proportion of people offering short-term rentals are actually licensed?
You mean through the Commissioner of Revenue's office?
Yes.
I don't know. We could put in an inquiry in terms of the number of listings. We could certainly do that.
Yeah, that was.
And I would just, just add one, one other thing, which I, you know, I, I appreciate all the, the comments that, that have been made, very, very helpful. Mr. O'Connor mentioned that we do have a, a pretty active hospitality industry in the area. And it is important, I think, for us to recognize that in James City County, that's not really predominantly hotels, it's timeshares, which do offer the ability of somebody to come in and have a kitchen and, and a living room and have that kind of privacy that, that they may want and, you know.
A lot of timeshares are part of VRBO and.
That's, and that's, and that's, you know, from my perspective, that's fine because that's what they're, that, that's what they're there for. And it's not a question of competing with anybody else for, for uses. So thanks, Sam. Yeah, I would really like to know about the percentage.
Yeah, I, I, yes, I had a question because I was overpaying my personal property taxes.
Paying, you were, you were not overpaying them.
No, I was not overpaying. I was paying exactly what was required. And there was a conversation going on across the, at the Commissioner of Revenue's office, and it was regarding someone who had an Airbnb. And I, I did, I think I even followed up with you and asked what type is there, because I realized that under code, the Commissioner of Revenue is a, he's an elected official, doesn't necessarily, I think there's, there's rules in place about what's shareable, what's not. But I was curious what, what the, like, was there any tickler to say, oh, okay, that was 135 the main, they're running an Airbnb, let me, let me check with the county to see if they know that they're an Airbnb? And I, I didn't know how that worked.
We can get back to you with some more information. There's also a big distinction too on the initial issuance of a business license versus the annual renewals.
Yeah.
For example, an approval expires or something ancillary.
Okay.
There are a lot of, you know, at the retreat, I think it was mentioned, close to almost probably 2,000 business licenses, businesses in the county. You know, at some point, it's not practical to check those annually for current zoning ordinance.
Is it possible with those renewals, they could do fire inspections at that time?
Again, we'd have to see what the code would provide for and then, you know, the idea about, you know, let's say we've got three or 400 short-term rentals in the county, there, there won't be staffing to do those annually.
I'm not staffing to do that.
Yeah.
That would be something that if the, you know, like my rentals, a company comes in once a year and checks all the smoke detectors and everything. That way it's, it's certified and I know that it's good, even though I know, you know, when a smoke detector is in, but that way I'm covered. And, but do most of them do it? Probably not. And they get their certification just like you in your house, you know? You don't have somebody come to your house once a year and check everything. It's like, okay, we know it changed the year, when spring forward and fall back, we change our batteries. So, but for rentals, it's, it's a better idea to, but it's got to be the owner, it's got to be a responsible owner. But I can tell you that we did have people in this past weekend for the college graduation and they were glad to get away from town, to get out there. So, you know, it's, it's different walks of life, you know? Some people want the city life, some people want to be out in the country, some people want to be near cer- certain things. So, you know, it gives a, and we offer, you know, online, if you look us up, you'll see all the things at James City County, Williamsburg, Yorktown, Jamestown, everything that's offered, from beer and wine to, to Colonial Williamsburg, to Busch Gardens, to anything you can think of and, and just try to promote that, get out and, you know, spend money in the county while you're here. Any others?
Is there any guidance on this issue or we continue to watch?
I was wondering when you were going to get around to that question.
You must have raised it for a reason.
Yeah. Guidance?
I, I'd say my guidance would be what you suggested originally, Mr. Paulster, which was that we're probably just going to have to get a little bit more experience with this before we can come to any firmer conclusions.
Don't know what you don't know.
Thank you.
I, I, I would, one thing that came out in this discussion that I, they actually made a note, I don't know the degree to which it's a problem, but, you know, I, I don't have a problem with people who have a house, they want to rent the house or whatever like that. But when you start getting someone who's running three, four, five, 10 of them, you know, that's, that's commercial business. And that, I think, is a little bit outside of, of what we're looking at with the short-term, you know, like Airbnb or VRBO or whatever. I'm, I'm more concerned about the corporate aspect of it. And I don't know what, whether we have the ability to limit the number that an individual or a corporation or whatever could, could have in, in, in the county. I, I would defer to the county attorney on that.
Each, each application is considered separately as, as a land use issue, and so that'd be a tough one to sort of tie it to, to ownership of them. It'd be a difficult one.
I think maybe one thing you could look at is, okay, if, if you, if you have an Airbnb on one lot, and if you had a second one that you wanted to add to that lot, maybe you only have one a lot. And a lot is a size. Or a dedicated lot, if it's 20 acres and you have one Airbnb, you can have one Airbnb. And, you know, that may be something you want to start looking at as far as, you know, the lots, so that we don't end up with one-acre lot with four Airbnbs on it. And, because then that changes that lot and everything else about it. Maybe we look at it like we had to do houses, you know? You've got a lot, you've got a house, you could have a lot, a house and an Airbnb, but not have two Airbnbs. One would have to be a house, one had to be an Airbnb, something like that, maybe to.
I raised the concern just simply because we don't know what would happen with the 38 that we're going to be reviewing here or if we even will see 38. It may, it may be just six. It may, it may be just six. And so, that's why I would like us to be able to just see what happens and then take them as they come along. And we're going to end up having a discussion of it, it'll be in the report for you all to give us some guidance on that. So I do have the guidance, and I appreciate that. We really did thank you for the opportunity, for coming to talk with you about these two issues. Is there anything else that you'd like us to take onboard?
I think at this time, but I want to thank you and your team and all the hard work y'all have done, and not only this, but you do every day. And it's a thankless job a lot of times, and you get things accomplished, and a lot of times you get, why'd you do that? Why didn't you do this? Why didn't you do that? But y'all, y'all are a good team, y'all work well together, it's different walks of life. And I do want to thank you and your team and all the hard work and all the effort you put in for James City County. Thank you.
I did have one last item, is, you know, we got a, I guess, an email from Paul around maybe 10 o'clock this morning, and it was offering congratulations for the NICO award for the comp plan work that happened. And I will tell you that, you know, we struggled with that comp plan with a lot of hours. And Ellen Cook and Paul and the staff were just absolutely fantastic as we went through that. So I'd like to say thank you to everybody that's here that participated in that job. If there's nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn from the planning commission meeting? We, voice vote? No, no, voice vote.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, see, we have-
Library.
Yep, we have 45 minutes. Let's bring the library up next, regional library discussion. Betsy, congratulations again on your outstanding work.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Hippel, members of the board, Mr. Stevens. Thank you so much for asking me to come and just set up some possible conversation about the path forward for the regional library. I want to preface my remarks by just thanking this board for your outstanding support of the regional library. This county has supported the library for decades, and especially recently, with capital money to upgrade the James City County Library by paying in the majority of the operating funding for the regional library. And I know I speak for the board and the 56,000 current card users when I thank you for that, because you have made it the library system that it is. So, is this right-click? So, a quick overview of why we are looking at new library spaces. We have a significant shortage of space for books, people, and services. The Williamsburg Library Facility, which is the busiest library in the system, is 50 years old and functionally failing. In 2007, an independent building consultant hired by the library board recommended the construction of a third library in James City County. That was actually in the county CIP, and then when the Great Recession hit, it was removed. In 2017, the library board again recommended a third library be constructed in James City County and a new library facility in Williamsburg. In 2018, the library board conducted a Williamsburg building assessment, site studies, a public survey, and focus groups. At that time, a suggestion was made to construct a jointly funded larger library, but no decision was made. In terms of library space needs, you can see, over the decades, the square footage for the state, they recommend for a tier-three library, which we are, one square foot per capita. So you can see the deficit on the bottom line continues to expand. We have not added any library space since 1998. We don't come near meeting the state standards for library square footage per capita. And not just the square footage deficit, but in the case of the Williamsburg Library Building, the quality of the space needs to be addressed. And here's a visual representation of that. The orange is James City County's population, purple is the city of Williamsburg, and then gray is York County. And you can see we added additions in Williamsburg and the new James City County Library in the 90s, but nothing's been added since then. And the fall of '22, the officers of the library board, working with library staff, began discussions on how to help facilitate a regional consensus on how to move forward with some new library spaces. The library invited a representative from each funding jurisdiction, a member of the library board, the chair and vice chair, the chair of the library foundation and staff to serve on a task force to look at a way forward. The library engaged a neutral mediator pro bono who helped us to facilitate discussions. And the task force met a total of three times, twice in February and once in March. So the task force goals were, first of all, to make sure we preserve the regional library system, and that remains intact going forward with the support of all three jurisdictions, to address an urgent need for new Williamsburg Library Facility, to invite the representatives from each funding jurisdiction to set forth their goals and needs for their jurisdictions, and to try to forge a collaborative vision for future library facilities to take back to the individual jurisdictions for deliberation and action. So the task force came together to recommend that two new libraries be constructed, a minimum of 35,000 square foot each, that Phase 1 would be the Williamsburg Facility. And the recommendation was the city of Williamsburg would contribute 20 million to the project, James City County 10 million, the Friends Foundation would seek to fundraise 1.75 to 3.5 million, and York County could contribute, but that was not determined at the time. Phase 2 would be James City County constructing a third library for an estimated 36 million, with the city of Williamsburg contributing 2 million and the Friends Foundation 2 to 4 million. And again, York County's contribution possibly to be determined. Some of the ways the commission got to this was because James City County residents are the predominant users of the Williamsburg Facility. 68% of all checkouts in FY '22 were done by James City County residents. And the fact that the Williamsburg Facility has existed and will continue to exist eliminates the need for the county to build additional facilities or an even larger facility, because that is meeting the need of part of their population. Because Williamsburg already has funding in the CIP and it's ready to move forward with a design phase, the committee recommended starting with the Williamsburg Facility first, and then James City County coming onboard with starting the design phase in three to five years, that the Williamsburg Library will have a theater and to be determined whether or not James City County would want to fund another theater. And the committee also recommended that the system be rebranded to reflect the participation of all the jurisdictions that contribute funding. And another point that was important was with the initial phase, the operating budget is not anticipated to increase for the new Williamsburg Facility, because the existing building already has five different service desks that we're manning, and it's fairly expensive to operate in terms of utilities and operations. So we're not anticipating a new building will be more expensive. And the benefits of their recommendation, it's a comprehensive regional library vision to carry the community forward for the next 30 years. It provides two new libraries to meet state standards. It addresses the urgency of the failing Williamsburg Facility. A two-library plan also makes parking more tenable for the Williamsburg Facility, since it won't be serving as many people. And it allows for the Friends of the Library to stagger their fundraising campaigns. And finally, a proposed timeline was the Williamsburg Facility design begins this year, construction in 2024, '25, construction continues, opening in '26, and then possibly with James City County, design beginning in FY '27, and that's based on the current CIP proposal, but could change. Construction beginning in FY '28, construction continuing, and the library actually opening in FY '30, probably in sometime after July 2029. So that's basically my update, and I am happy to answer. Any questions, or?
Questions? Yes, ma'am.
Just one question, well, two. Croker Library is not affected, we're good to go in Croker.
That's right.
Good to hear. Everybody loves that library.
It's a wonderful facility.
The kids love that place. In terms of the James City County Facility, how does that coordinate with the county complex? Is that part of what we've been looking at, or does this change that timeline, or how does that work?
Ms. Saylor, we've got the, you know, one time we talked about the library potentially being in the county complex. At this time, I think we've got social services, and we've not made that final decision to use that space. So we have a CIP project for the county complex, and then we have 27 million, I believe, in fiscal year '27 for the library. So that's phased on us, depending on what goes on with the downtown branch, and do we contribute there? What do we do with, do we maintain the '27 timeframe on the third branch in James City County? And that's a decision you don't have to make today, but we would need to make that decision in future CIPs as they're adopted. So right now, it is programmed in '27, independent of the government complex.
And why don't we know what York County is going to do? Just curious. Just thought I'd ask.
When we did our focus group, or when we came together, I represented the county, and Mayor Pons represented the city, there was not an elected official that came from York. It was the Assistant County Administrator, and so it was a little tougher to get buy-in for that. And I think part of the issue could have, is possibly that they, you know, they don't do stagger terms there, they're all up this year. And I don't think that the representative for Upper York is, yeah, that's right, is running again. So there just seemed to be some back and forth regarding that. I think when we did all meet again, and we had the Assistant County Administrator and the County Administrator, Mr. Morgan did, you know, say that they would contribute, but how that was going to be was still to be determined. There was some talk about possibly removing the operating piece and putting it into the capital, but, you know, frankly, that doesn't really work, because she depends on that for her budget, and the use is increasing. They do not invest as much into their library system that is currently in York County as much as the city and the county of James City do here. And so there was some discussion about, you know, would they get pushed back if they also contributed more up here? So they've got some political things to work out. But I think that the message from both the city of Williamsburg and the county of James City was, we would like you to come to the table with something, and which could change what our contribution would possibly be to the one at the city. But I didn't, you know, frankly, I don't have a lot of angst about the contribution to the city, because it's clearly James City County residents that are using that, and it's taken a considerable beating, it needs to be replaced. And I think we've got a few years until the counties open. And then I think it's frankly, you're still going to see county residents that are going to want to use the one downtown. I think we'll definitely see an increase at the one in James City from our residents, and possibly even, especially if we do it in the Newtown area, because the thing that is so nice about that is we are bordering the city there. So, you know, it'll, it'll be whichever one is in ease of, you know, to get to. But that's, that's the latest that I had from York.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to tell you that Ruth did an excellent job leading this, carrying this for James City County, and following through on it, getting us, you know, especially me, updated on what was going on, and sat through the last meeting and, you know, all the negotiations that she made and what needed to be done. So hats off to you and all your efforts and all the-
Thank you for that.
-that you put in. I want to thank you publicly, so everyone knows that, you know, you were the leader on this and did an excellent job of putting this together for James City County. And I definitely know it's going to definitely give us a better library, it's going to enhance Williamsburg, it's going to enhance us when we build our library, and we're still partnering, and we're still coming together. So I just want to say thank you on all your hard work on that.
Well, I'm passionate about a library. It opens up a lot to people who cannot afford, for whatever reason, and also you have a digital, that if somebody can't get into the library for whatever reason, I mean, we have just an outstanding library system. And I really appreciate your leadership. I appreciate those words, but I really, if I didn't feel so passionate about it, I wouldn't. But I was determined to, to work hard, and I really appreciate all the work of everybody that was on that committee, because I think we, and our mediator knocked it out of the park, because it's never easy to get everybody in the same building. But I do think that we've put it off way too long. We're kind of in a crisis situation downtown. And, you know, I mean, let's be real, the mayor was really wanting a big library downtown, but there were, there's other iss, you know, that's not easy either, and that, that came with a very large price tag. So I hope we can get here, because I think it's really important for the community. And I do have to say that the library out in Croker is just wow. I mean, it is really something. I've had to go out there a couple of times for meetings the last few months, and I just can't get over it. It's a beautiful library, people don't go, I always go downtown. So, I know, because it's closer.
Yeah.
I'm one of those 68 percenters.
That's right.
Sometimes a circle, John, to be honest. Because as the, as the, as the survey showed us, even though there's a garage right across the street, people don't use it.
No.
That's right. I should have added to-
It's always full every time I try to use it.
Yeah, I know.
The library board did do a resolution that we shared with Mr. Stevens, requesting that each of the jurisdictions look at going forward and if an agreement can be forged and finalized. Since the city does have design money starting July 1, we're anxious to be able to nail down how big a library we're doing and what the budget will be so we can move forward.
First of all, I want to, I want to thank Ruth for her active role in moving this forward, and appreciate all the, all the hard work and recognition of the need to deal with this. I also want to thank Director Fowler for her leadership on all of this. I mean, I know that it's not easy trying to get us all on the same page, and so hats off to you. While I'm on the subject of complimenting her, I also want to mention that Betsy showed up at my invitation to our, my Grove Community Meeting last week, and informed folks of an amazing array of programs that the library is carrying out at the Abram Frink Center on Saturdays, and other services that are going on continuously, and her hopes to expand that even more. And so I thank you very much for not only coming to the meeting, but staying for the full two hours and providing so much rich information for folks. It was just very, very helpful. I'm, I'm ready to move ahead. I'd love to see something moving. I would hope that whatever we do in the county does include some kind of a space for theater or auditorium or something of that nature, because I think that there is a lack of enough space in the community for all the needs that we have. And frankly, I think that before long, that facility is going to draw more people, because it is going to have a more modern kind of feel to it and a lot more parking, a lot more availability for folks to get in and out there. So I think that it's time for us to, you know, move ahead, and hopefully we will be able to, by the end of this decade, have in place two excellent facilities to join the third that's already in place now in Croker. With that, I'll leave it to others.
No leaks.
That's right. No leaks.
So what would we need to do in order to pass what Ms. Fowler is asking us?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Larson, I guess for me, what I wanted to see is where the board was, and if there's a willingness to contribute some towards the city branch, then I've got to circle back with the city manager and the York County Administrator. And York, Neil Morgan had been pretty consistent to say, when we figure out what we want to do from James City and the city, then he would be more inclined to give an idea of where they should fall in. And so for me, if they're asking 10 million of us, and it takes 30 million to get this built, or 35 million, that whatever we can get from York would reduce our contribution. And whether we spread that across to future branches or just invest more in the city will be some of our conversation. But I would circle back with that. Eventually, we'd have an agreement. There was a question, how would we fund this $5 or $10 million expense that's not built into our CIP? So that's one of the things that Sharon Day, or Sharon McCarthy and I would have to work through in terms of where that fits in. And we have talked about possibilities, but some of that is timing of money. Does the city need it July 1st, of this year, or next year, or when they open it? Or do they need it over time? And what is our contribution? Is it 10 million, or is it something less? And so I think with your direction of saying generally you're supportive of this concept, that gives me enough to move forward with them and bring something back that would be a formal agreement, that at that point, we'd ask you to adopt so that it is something they can count on for our funding in the future to build the downtown branch.
I did have a question about, about our sense that, you know, I know the Friends of the Library are exceptionally dedicated and they're, and they're supportive of the library, but this is a very large lift for that organization, I think. And do they have the sense that that is something that they can accomplish?
They are working with a firm to help them do an assessment. So they put out those ballpark numbers, because it was 5% to 10% of the project costs, and they have heard that in other major projects where Friends or other groups have stepped up, that's usually the span that they try to raise. Whether or not that type of funding is available locally, they don't have an assessment yet.
They've been working on it, so.
Yes, they are actively.
Right here, move forward. All right. Moving forward.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right. Parks master plan for the Brickyard Landing Park. How's there? Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm back again to, with a draft of a master plan, so similar to what we've done for some of our previous park master plans. We've brought kind of our first draft to the board to solicit feedback and direction prior to our public input period and then final approval. So today, just real briefly, I'm going to give you some of the background on the park, some of the proposed amenities on this master plan, and then our timeline moving forward. So just a quick history. Brickyard Landing Park is located in the Powhatan District along the Chickahominy River. It's right off of Forge Road, next to the Chickahominy Haven neighborhood. It's a really beautiful site. It dates back, history-wise, to the 17th century. There were a lot of unique activities there, most notably in the early 19th, or earlier 20th century, it was a brickyard from which the name came from. But most recently, from about the 50s until 1997, it was Newpern News Shipbuilding, Shipbuilding's recreational area. So there's actually some existing recreational amenities on the site there. In 2020, the county purchased 119 acres surrounding the boat ramp. We had already owned and operated the boat ramp, but all the surrounding land through a Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. And we operate it today mainly as a boat ramp. It's, it gets quite a bit of use by the boaters accessing the Chickahominy River. Short-term improvements that we have made, our General Services Department has done a fantastic job, kind of renovating those two existing picnic shelters. As we get into some of the additional amenities, I'll get into a little more detail, but adding a tending pier, repairing the existing pier there, and helping with some of the cleanup in the park. So, you know, starting there, we used some of the same kind of methods we've used in previous master plans. We looked at our Parks and Recreation Master Plans to identify needs in that region. We looked at the 2018 Virginia Outdoors Plan, and came up with this map as kind of our starting point. So I'm going to quickly go through the amenities on here. The first one, A, down at the bottom, is a tending pier. So that's actually been built. That pier that you see there actually connects in a right angle to a tending pier that runs alongside the boat ramp. So there's plenty of space now. We put some ladders on it for the boaters to, to tie off. B is the existing boat ramp. C are the two existing picnic shelters, which, as I said, have been, they were actually in really good condition, other than the, the roof on each one needed some work. So they, they repaired that. We got them cleaned up. So they're, they're existing amenities. D is a utility shed. That was an existing bathhouse facility that unfortunately could not be salvaged. It was no longer structurally sound. So that structure is coming down, but the back room houses the well pump and the breakers, and we wanted a shed to kind of cover that area. And then we get to kind of the, the new amenities, starting with E. So we get quite a lot of use from boaters at this site, but it, it, it doesn't have the space to accommodate the really big use like we see at Chickahominy Riverfront Park. So we wouldn't be able to, you know, host a fishing tournament or something like that, but we have that on the Chickahominy River a little further down. So here, we actually used kind of the layout that Newpern News Shipbuilding used all those years ago. Along the road, there's some pretty good ground that's outside of the RPA, outside of the floodplain there, that we can utilize for that trailer parking for day use of the boat ramp. F is adding a parking lot specifically for cars to add on to that, so we can kind of keep those boats and trailers in their area, and the car parking in another. G is a restroom facility that would serve all the uses. We moved it a little closer to the roadway, the parking lot, for ADA concerns. H would be a hard-surface asphalt multi-use trail, but it would have a second purpose as providing accessible, an accessible route to all the amenities listed before. So the restroom facility at the two picnic shelters. I is a playground, playground, you know, with the picnic opportunities, we usually find the playground fits well with those. And J, we kind of left open. So our purpose here, that side of the park, we wanted to kind of retain as a natural area, but we wanted to keep it as a meadow, something that we can kind of control the growth, growth and preserve that view shed of the Chickahominy River. If anyone's pulled into that park, you get a fantastic view, really where the river bends, so you can see quite a bit of the river there. So we wanted to keep that as kind of a low meadow area. And then K is the inset on the top left, and those would be natural surface trails, whether they're hiking or mountain biking, to really take advantage of some of the, there's some really unique terrain and some really unique sites along the river and that property there. So overall, it's a fairly passive, passive recreation. The focal point is still access to the Chickahominy River via the boat ramp and providing the adequate parking for that, but also picnic areas, hiking trails, and natural areas. In addition to all that, we would, there's such a rich amount of history in this spot. We would also utilize interpretive signs. We could hold interpretive programs and that sort of thing in this park. So as with any other park master plan, any of these improvements would be incorporated into our CIP, but there is the possibility of additional land and water conservation grant funding for the development of this park in the future. So our process is going to be similar to years past. We, we plan on holding a public input period with online surveys, paper surveys at the REC Center and at the James City County Library. And we have scheduled a public meeting, and we haven't advertised it yet, but we've scheduled a public meeting on June 28 from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the James City County Library. We wanted to kind of move it a little closer to the location of the park there. Following that public input period, we'll bring these master plans to the Parks and REC Advisory Commission in July, the James City County Planning Commission in October, and we hope to return to the Board of Supervisors for their November 14 meeting. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or get any feedback on this first draft of our master plan.
Questions?
Mr., did you say you had, excuse me, you had already repaired the picnic shelters?
Yes.
Is that possible to send us a picture of that, so we could see that?
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And down the road, there, there's existing fixed picnic tables, and we may explore removing those and having, we could probably make more of the space if we had our, our park standard picnic tables. But the equipment out there that they installed years ago is, is pretty solid. It's lasted quite some time.
Now, the, the dock there, A, that we fixed and extended, and it looks wonderful. Did a great job. But can we put something there? Because I've noticed some of the boat traffic have been in there, in and out of there quite a bit, because it's not too far from the house. And the boaters will come up there to tie up, but when we've got a lot of fishermen out there, they're taking up the whole thing.
Right.
So they don't have any place to tie up long enough to get their trailer out and park it and get back to the boat. So, you know, if we could put something on the end that says boat tying area and fishing beyond this area, because once the fishermen get out there and they get their lines out, they don't want to move them and-
Right.
-the boaters. I, I could see as, as this catches on more and more, because this is, I've, I've always loved this site, it's a beautiful site, and it's a, it's a gold mine for James City County. And I can see it getting utilized more and more. And so that might be something we want to look at. I'd love to see that being extended even further down as we mature the site and give more fishing and just standing around places for people to come, because the area over there in J, if, if you go up to where the power line is at the top left, you know how the power line goes back, crap, back over? There's a vehicle, I shut the gate there, the metal gate, and I've shut it a couple of times. There's a vehicle that comes down and is doing donuts back there and tearing it up down the power line. And he's coming down, I don't know if he's coming down the road coming in, or he's coming from the other side of the power line, because you got access from the road if you get around that little pond down there. But most of it looks like he's coming in the park. And so maybe somebody close in the area that may have one of the four-wheelers or something that's going in there, but they're tearing up our park, most of the power lines, and, you know, we're going to rework all that, but, so if you can keep an eye on that, I would appreciate it.
And we do have some short-term plans to replace all the, all of the white vinyl fencing that's along there-
Right.
... with a more of a sturdy traffic barrier, more attractive, lower traffic barrier. We, we plan in the short term to actually move the parking to where we show on this master plan, because you can see in this aerial, you know, where people drive on that field area.
Yep.
And, and so we should be able to restrict that a little better here this summer, so.
We've, we've run a few young ones out of there this year that have started some bonfires and thought it was a party spot.
Yeah, the sooner we can kind of seal that off, probably.
Definitely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Time's getting tight. You have 15 more minutes?
Yeah. So I, can we, can I make a, so typically, I, I try to not miss a meeting or, but I had a, I've been trying to get an appointment for quite some time. I had moved it from three to three, to four, so I, I have a feeling this discussion is going to go later than that. There's probably, there's already been questions that have been raised through email, et cetera. So I would respectfully, I can listen when I get into my car in 15 minutes, but I would respectfully ask that there not be a vote. And I know that's really tight, because I know this is a state. I, I did talk with Mr. Johnson, who said, you know, the state really doesn't want to put off this vote, but, but they can defer it until June 13th. So I would just, I would ask that consideration as y'all work your way through this process, and I'm not here for the ending.
Is this something that the board thinks we can get through in 15 minutes before she leaves? No? Really? Okay. I didn't think it'd be that bad. All right. Roll your sleeves up.
So I, but my apologies to my colleagues. It was, it was not intentional. Yes, I'll, I'll continue to listen, and then I will talk with staff or one of you tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Next on the board considerations, the Virginia Business Ready Site Programs. Mr. Johnson.
Christopher.
How you doing, sir?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and the board. In 2019 and 2020, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership initiated an ambitious program to conduct close to 500 site characterization studies across the Commonwealth to gain a better sense of where Virginia stood in terms of site readiness for industrial and commercial sites of 25 acres or more. To participate, property owners had to opt in and grant permission for their sites to be studied. The VEDP paid for these engineering studies and analysis, and 11 of those sites studied happened to be in James City County, and we found that none produced a site readiness rating greater than a tier three, meaning these sites would take anywhere between three to eight years to be considered project or shovel-ready. The Office of Economic Development submitted a request as part of the FY '23 Capital Improvement Program to establish funding to conduct due diligence studies that would raise the site readiness tier ranking for four of the industrial sites identified by, by VEDP staff and KPMG Consulting that were considered the most likely sites to attract interest from prospective companies, given their proximity to I-64, existing infrastructure, and industry that could attract supply chain development. The funding requests were based upon engineering estimates that the cost of the studies to advance the four sites one additional tier. The adopted FY '23 budget included $148,000 for the Hazelwood Farms Enterprise Center, and the adopted FY '24 budget included $98,000 for 9131 and 9200 Barrensville Road. Last year, the Office of Economic Development worked with VEDP sites and building staff to submit a grant application for consideration as part of the Virginia Business Ready Sites Program, a discretionary program aimed at promoting development and characterization of industrial sites to enhance the Commonwealth's infrastructure of industrials, Commonwealth's infrastructure, and to promote its competitive business environment. The program's goal is to identify and assess the readiness of potential industrial sites of at least 100 or more contiguous developable acres for alignment with the governor's economic development plan. The Business Ready Site Program seeks to improve the inventory of project-ready sites and determine those that are most likely as high-wind potential sites. The focus for VEDP is on sites with statewide and regional impact. The Hazelwood Enterprise Center property checks both of these boxes, is located in a foreign trade zone with excellent interstate access and proximity to the port of Virginia. The governor's administration also adds the focus should be on developing sites that offer a strong potential return on investment. Business Ready Site Program grants typically require a 50% match, but because the county's unemployment rate coming out of the pandemic spiked this year, the required match was reduced for the county for, to a two-to-one ratio, because the county, because of the unemployment rate, was considered distressed. This will be the last year that that is possible. 65 grant applications were submitted for over $400 million in funding requests, and with only $85 million available in funding. The grant review process was highly competitive. Economic development staff worked closely in concert with property owners, their commercial brokers, local engineers, in advancing through three rounds of competitive grant review meetings. On January 16 of this year, Governor Youngkin announced that James City County had been awarded a grant of $485,500 to complete the required due diligence studies and design water and sanitary sewer extensions to increase the site readiness ranking for the Enterprise Center from a tier one to a tier four, thereby reducing the estimated time to get the site shovel-ready from four to eight years to nine to 12 months. James City County was one of only 21 localities in the Commonwealth to be awarded a grant in this development cycle. The project scoped and services included, include boundary and topographic surveys, Phase One environmental and cultural resource assessments, Threat and Endangered Species Review, Preliminary Geotechnical Report, as well as construction-ready engineering and design for wet utility extensions from LaGrange Parkway and the Stonehouse Commerce Park to Old Stays Road adjacent to the Enterprise Center site. The grant award is between VEDP and the county and is a reimbursement grant, meaning the county contracts the work with an approved engineering firm and is only reimbursed when work has been completed and reviewed by VEDP. No grant funds go to the property owner, owner or development, or developer of the property. Staff recommends adoption of the resolution that's in your board packet, however, with Ms. Larson's request. I won't put it forward to request your consideration today for a vote, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions we have in the remaining time.
Questions for staff?
So how long have you been, how long have you been working on this?
The site characterization work goes back to 2019 and 2020, taking the results of those studies, working with VEDP. Um, taking the results of those studies, working with V E D P. Um, certainly coming out of the, uh, the end of two thousand twenty-one when the Enterprise Center site was rezoned and master planned. Um, began talking to V E D P about ways to bring that site into development sooner. Um, back then, the Hazelwood family did not have a commercial brokerage, did not have it listed. Um, that would have been an issue. Um, we said, we need to be getting forward and start getting some of this due diligence work completed now in hopes of attracting the developer to the site. They could see the site is having a high wind potential for not only targeted sector industry for the county, but as well as for the state. So Enterprise Center, I'd say it's been in the last two years. I mean, certainly in the, in the, in the C I P, that money was identified in F Y twenty-three. Um, and because it's in the C I P program, it doesn't expire like general fund monies do. As long as the project is still active, that money stays available. We were able to combine that money in F Y twenty-three as well as the F Y twenty-four budget to have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of matching funds to be able to put forward to get the grant for four hundred and eighty-five thousand this year.
Okay, and you mentioned that we, there was something additional that we qualified for due to our unemployment rate. So I am assuming that they are, then they, they must mean that the jo- the jobs that would come out of this site then would, would help that unemployment is what they're, they're.
To take localities, the localities are, are, have no restriction and then it's a fifty-fifty match for V B S R P. Those like James City County this year with a singular point of distress. And then there are those that are double distressed, have a high unemployment rate and a high poverty rate. So because of the pandemic level spike, our unemployment rate went up. This last grant year's application was the one and only year that James City County would qualify as distressed, thereby reducing our match dollars from fifty percent down to thirty-three percent.
Okay, um, and then you mentioned the, the length of where this is going. Are there, are there any other uh, places that will benefit by this extension?
And the, the work that would be accomplished through the grant would be the design and engineering of construction-ready documents to be able to do the site extension work, not the construction work itself.
I gotcha.
If the developer of the Enterprise Center moves forward quickly with development of that property, needs to get this water sewer extension in the ground, that water sewer extension, but also pass the other property that was listed as our F Y twenty-four property, ninety-one thirty-one and ninety-two hundred Barhamsville Road, the Hornsby Properties. The McDonald's, as well as the gas station that's up on the corner of Old Stage, have been on well-inseptic since they've been built. So there are other properties that would also benefit from having access to public utilities if and when those are constructed.
Okay, um, and is there any um, being on well-inseptic like that? I take it there is a, there's a benefit to getting, if, I understand that this is, this is just for studies. But if they were to, if the, the work were to be done, then I guess that would make a difference on um, things like fire protection, et cetera.
Is, is the Enterprise Center, which we've seen some massing studies, the master plan allows up to three point two million square feet of industrial space. Uh, the developer of the site, Love and Industrial, has shown us a massing study which shows two point two million square feet of industrial space going all the way throughout the entire park. As utilities are extended into the spine road through the park, all the way back towards the, the far western side of the property on Barnes Road. Those would bring utility easements all the way up to the edge of I sixty-four, which someday, when that is connected to the commercial side on the Village Center, you have a potential loop system from La Grange up to Fire, uh, Fieldstone Parkway, uh, thereby improving the, the fire safety and redundancy of the system for every resident in Stonehouse as well.
Okay, thank you.
Would, would it not also improve then the fire safety measures for the gas stations that are existing and the McDonald's? And potentially, I mean, if you're talking about fire protection around gas stations, could potentially help theoretically some of the residential areas that surround it as well, existing.
And certainly for any of the, the two million plus square feet of industrial development to go in there. You get a, a light manufacturer that has combustible materials, anything happens to be in one of those buildings, there requires an enhanced degree of firefighting capability. Um, having that redundancy and having that loop system helps not only residential development, but also any of the commercial industrial sites within the centers.
I mean, just in general, it's gonna help them even if they have a fire.
Cause right now, those lines don't exist.
Questions? Yeah, I, um, a couple of questions. The first one was the, uh, I find it, find it a little difficult to, to deal with. Because the first time I was aware that any of this was under consideration. When the governor made the announcement. You know, you would think that something of this magnitude would be something that all of us on this board would have been a little more aware of. Uh, and I believe I, I had a discussion, I don't, it, it may not be economic development. It may be more J C S A related, but when we're talking about the studies, when you actually physically go to do the infrastructure improvement, which is water and sewer. You're talking about running it for the better part of about pa- three-quarters of a mile. And I think, uh, Mr. Stevens, I think you indicated that that was somewhere in the vicinity of twenty to thirty million dollars worth of work?
We have talked with J C S A, so I don't remember the exact number, but it is a multimillion dollar extension to run the water and sewer.
Okay.
The distance, I don't know the exact number.
We had this issue, we had this discussion before when we, when we did the, the Wendy's that never got built. You know, we talked about how far away is the nearest water and sewer? It was a long way. It wasn't, wasn't worth it to bring, bring it in. Okay, I understand we're gonna bring it in and I understand it's gonna be a, a big expense. And when something like that happens, this is something that needs to be done on the developer's dime, not on the taxpayer's dime. Now, I, I, I gotta tell you, I, I, what sort of bothered me a little bit about this was when I read through here. We've done things like this before with property that we own in industrial parks. We've gotten grants, we put public money into these kinds of things. That's, that's part of economic development. I understand that. Um, I think what bothered me a little bit is that this one is, it has been rezoned and in my opinion, we gave a real windfall to the property owner because they no longer have to come back to us for S U Ps for a lot of uses and stuff that normally anybody else would do. So that, because it made it more marketable. To my understanding, uh, I think we maybe have a buyer out there. Uh, the buyer may not be the buyer itself, it's maybe a, a, somebody who's gonna flip it and turn it. Um, my concern right now is that we are talking about putting close to seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars of taxpayer money into studies to prepare a site for economic development that's privately owned. Not only that, the ones up by, the, the two pieces we, we talked about earlier, as mentioned in, in, in the staff report, um, that are the Hornsby uh, properties, the, the two up right by where the uh, McDonald's are, uh, is privately owned. And I, I'm, I'm, I asked the question earlier. I said, have we ever done anything like that for privately-owned property in James City County? And the answer I got back was not necessarily in James City County. I said, have we done, has it been done elsewhere in the, in the Commonwealth? And there are two instances that were given back to me. Um, and thank you very much for providing the details on that. One of them is in the, in the, uh, over at the cold terminal in, in, uh, in the city of Norfolk. And then the other one is at a, um, an industrial park up in Fritter County. Okay, so there, there is some precedent for it. My concern right now is that we haven't, I, I understand we asked the property owners if they would be willing to participate in this. Crickets. Everybody wants to line up for the public money. My concern is not just this particular, particular project. My concern is setting a precedent. When we decide we're gonna open the public purse to improve the properties that make it more marketable and ready to bring to fruition for a private entity, where do you draw the line? How do we pick the winners and losers? Is that our job? I'm, I'm really concerned about the precedent we're setting here. And I, I know we're running up on your time, um, Ruth, and I apologize. I didn't want to put you in that, in the situation, but uh, I, I, I would, I would appreciate the opportunity. Cause I've been out of town pretty much most of the last part of the week. And I would appreciate the opportunity to have a, a discussion amongst ourselves individually, one-on-one um, about some of these issues that I'm concerned about. And if the board ultimately decides this is in the best interest of James City County to use public money for, uh, you know, uh, to help improve a privately-owned piece of property, that'll be the decision the board makes. I'm just a little uncomfortable, I'm very uncomfortable with it. And I, and I, I guess I gotta go back to the, the fact that, because disappointment for me was the lack of knowledge of the details that were going on behind the scene. I think we, as the board, really ought to have a, a better sense of what's being planned. And I'll just, I'll let it go at that.
And Ms. Larson, I, I, if I could just respond, if it's a lack of not keeping the board up to date.
Yep.
That is my fault.
Okay.
We're doing work all the time, what we think, trying to leverage. And I apologize if we didn't do a good enough job of that. It's certainly not Chris's place for that.
No, I, I, I understand that. And, and we've, you and I have had this personal discussion earlier. Cause I expressed my concerns to you early on, uh, when, when, when the announcement was made. Um, and I said, and I've, I've been asking for more information. I think the problem has been, um, and, and I, I don't want to throw rocks at staff. I think the problem is that we need to come out of this with a better understanding of what we, what we try to do some of these things like this. We have to have a better feel on the board for some of the things that are going on. Because you know, this, this is a, this is a huge philosophical change in my mind. If we do it, we do it. That's, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make a big issue out of that. You know, I mean, if the board thinks it's in the best interest of the taxpayers of James City County to do so, they will. I'm not convinced that it is right now, personally. And I, and I was just really concerned that the first time I really, really became aware that any of this was going on, was when the governor's announcement was made. I just didn't feel very. Who didn't process.
So just to clarify, all we're talking about today is grant money for a study.
Grant money for the studies as well as grant money to prepare construction-ready site plans to extend water sewer. Not for constructing those lines, those would entirely be done by the private sector, by the current owner of the property.
And do you anticipate that we would get our money back? In about what kind of timeframe?
Good question. That's, that's, that's an excellent question.
The money that we put in, do you anticipate that we would get that back?
By increasing the tier ranking of the Enterprise Center property from a tier one to a tier four, we're saying that that property is going to be project-ready, shovel-ready within the next year. It would take at least a year to prepare plans and get those approved, so essentially that's two years. As soon as they start bringing development infrastructure out of the ground, buildings out of the ground, those buildings become acquired, attract jobs, attract companies, machinery and tool tax, B poll. That revenue comes back to the county and will more than reimburse the money that goes into matching funds or through the state. It also has the ability, by being one of the twenty-one localities that were part of this program this year, of enabling James City County to go back in future years and say, we were one of those first twenty that had a shovel-ready site as part of the V B S R P program. We'd like to come back for additional grant support. If you come off of that list, you have a hundred and thirty-three political jurisdictions in this state. It's very difficult to get back on the list and get back in site developers' minds and consultants' minds in saying, when a prospect comes through and says, I need at least a building of, of the ability to build a half million square feet or I need at least a hundred acres or two hundred acres. If you don't have those sites, you're not on their list. And it's very easy to, to drop off that and it's very difficult to get back on it. So it's, just is a statement from what I hear from the V E D P folks all the time and those that we worked with in going through this process. A lot of these folks that submitted those requests for the four hundred million dollars of requests are pretty jealous. Um, that we're one of the twenty that got that. Only three in Hampton Roads did, Chesapeake, Norfolk and James City. So there's, sites and buildings are our product. And when we don't have available sites, we don't have available buildings, it's very difficult to take a prospect and say, it's worth considering James City County to locate or expand your business operations here. Because to them, it's controllable costs and time to market. How long is it gonna take me till I can break ground and be operational? And are there gonna be unknown costs and studies I'm gonna have to do? If I look into a site that could extend that back several years. By doing these sorts of studies, um, it gives us the ability to tell someone who's interested in one of those buildings, I could be operational in two years. And that's important to what we do, it's important for what the Alliance does, it's important for what V E D P does, so.
You know who the owner is besides the Hazelwoods?
Hazelwoods sold the Enterprise Center property to Love it Industrial at the end of April. So April twenty-eighth, I think the property changed hands.
So the Hazelwoods don't get any of this grant money, correct?
Excuse me.
The Hazelwoods, well, it was kind of, I've heard implications of that this week. Was there any, there's no funneling of money to any property owners from this grant money?
Correct.
Thank you.
So the, the benefit of this grant money in advancing it to tier four makes that property more valuable and more marketable for the original owner, doesn't it?
It doesn't change the assessment of the property until land is put to use and buildings are put on it, the assessment won't go up. The asking price that the Hazelwoods established for the property was based upon the, the master plan and the proffers, not based upon a grant coming in to be able to help them move the site along and attract additional users to the buildings that they would like to build.
And based on what you're hearing, because we're in the foreign trade zone, we're on the tail end of it. We're the cutoff, are we not? And we're at two-two-seven. That alone makes that marketable, correct?
And the eyes of the state, and the state helped our staff in looking at the eleven sites that we characterized with developing the list of the sites that they thought were most attractive to prospective businesses. They helped us say, this site, if this site gets rezoned, you should apply for a grant to the V B S R P program. You stand a very good likelihood of being able to get funding, not only this cycle, but in future cycles if additional development is necessary.
Have we got applications in for the Hornsby property? And do we have an application in for grant money for the Hornsby property in the future?
It would have been unnecessary this past year because the, the study that is done to extend water and sewer from La Grange to Old Stage goes right along the side of the Hornsby property. So putting in a separate grant application specific for Hornsby would have cannibalized the two applications and would have taken us out of the running. Local, localities are asked to submit one uh, per application cycle.
We, we've got this one. Let's just say we, we, we say yes, we're gonna take it, we go off, we do the studies. But when the Hornsby's want to develop their property, um, they're not gonna be tier four, are they?
They're already a tier two by having utilities present. That probably takes them up to a three, assuming they pay to do a characterization study. There's a different zoning of the Hornsby property, uh, than the Enterprise Center. So there's a more restrictive set of uses that the Hornsby property could currently do under its present zoning. But it, 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 it's not necessary for them to come in and do some of the work that this, that this grant would, would already be doing.
So I, I guess, I guess let me re- reverse it and look at this. Are you telling me then that after this, that we would, there's no way we would be making an application to the, uh, this, the state for a grant for, uh, uh, the Hornsby property, um, somewhere, sometime in the future?
Hornsby property isn't a hundred acres, so it wouldn't qualify for V B S P consideration anyway.
So it's kind of a move.
But it might be a separate program, but not V B S P.
The program Chris is talking to, it's a hundred acres. But if there were state monies out there that we could apply for, I think we would argue that we should apply for those to, to leverage local dollars and extend utilities or get sites ready, unless that you as a board tell us, we don't want to do any of that. Unless that you as a board tell us, we don't want to do any of that. And that's, you know, again, I don't want to mislead you and tell you the program he's speaking back directly, it wouldn't qualify for. But if there were an opportunity and they were moving along and we could figure out how to help that and. Meet what we believe is some of the interest of the county, then we would. Would consider that.
Could you explain again the unemployment? Faction of all this and how that played in just one more time?
The state takes every locality and says, are they at or below? The state average for poverty rate and for unemployment. If you are below in both of them. You are a 50/50 match max requirement. If you have a single point of distress, either poverty or unemployment. Then you drop, as we did this year, as a distressed community because of the pandemic unemployment. To where our match dropped from 50% down to two to one. Localities such as Newport News and Norfolk that are double distressed. That drops even further. We were told in applying for this this past year that James City will not be considered a distressed community in 2023 or beyond. Because our unemployment rate has dropped back well below state average. So this was a one-time opportunity for us to do a two-for-one grant op, grant application.
Which in the long run could overall help our employment rate. Or, as my kids would say, brrr.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, 2 million square feet of industrial is going to bring MNT, B-Pole, as well as jobs to the community.
And help keep our taxes lower for the rest of our citizens.
Help diversify our economy, which is a goal of the conference of plan. Yes.
So, so just on the unemployment side of it, I'm surprised to hear that, that we had that, um, high elevated unemployment rate. You know, I'm, I'm not surprised that, um, you know, we had a higher than normal unemployment rate. But everybody got affected by COVID. So it, it, you know.
It was still, it was, the, the list of localities in Virginia was still about a third that didn't have either of them. You know, folks that don't, I mean, certainly those that have hospitality tourism like we do. Were far more impacted than sites out in the western part of the state that don't have any of that. Where some of the employment they had might've been less, but it was more stable throughout the pandemic. And there's obviously a lag. Um, those unemployment spikes were, you know, well over two years ago. But by the time the data is reported through, that's the data that VDP considers.
In fact, the real challenge is going to be finding the people to work in those positions.
Which is why when they approached us last year encouraging us to apply for the program. They said, this is your only chance to be able to take advantage of that distressed community status.
Right, yeah. And I, I, can you explain this? I, I'm trying to figure out the, the timing on, on some of this. The, the move from a tier one to tier four. Did I hear right that, that if you're in tier one, that really says you're three to eight years away from the, from occupying?
It is, is a benchmark. I mean, the tiering system, having a tier ranking, a certified tier ranking does not. Make your property more valuable. It increases exposure. If you had your residential house on the market. It puts it under a broader sense of people knowing that it's available and. A wider variety of, of areas of the country, areas of the world frankly. Were able to take access to that and say, if they call the state and say, we need a list of sites. In the Commonwealth that have at least 100 acres. The Commonwealth will be able to say with this program, here's 20 of them. And so getting out, like I said, getting on that list and being part of this program has some additional benefit to us. Both in the short and the long term.
So how long does the process take for what, what, uh, this grant would pay for?
The process of doing the work associated with this grant would be done within a year.
Yeah, that's where I'm, I'm having the, the disconnect problem. You know, if we're talking about something that's shovel-ready, which means that. Project would be in place, I guess, within nine to 12 months?
Like I said, it, it's, if, if you consider that 12 months, it's going to take 12 months to get plans and permitting approved. So it really becomes, you know, a two-year process. So if you consider that point from the point at which these studies are done. The plans have been prepared and has been submitted VDP for certification. The new owners of the property can have a certification lever saying, we are a tier four site. That helps their marketing of those, those buildings, but it does not mean that in and of itself, 12 months from today. That is shovel-ready. It's 12 months from the point at which it becomes certified.
Okay, and I, I, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the, what the. Whole timeline, timeline is.
It's 12 months from essentially two years. I mean, it's 12 months to do the studies and, and get their certification, have the plans prepared. That puts you at a tier, a tier four. Tier four says within nine to 12 months, a prospective business. Could have plans done and be already operational. So it's two years from today, 12 months from when the certification gets done.
When the, um, you know, we talked years ago. And we talked about both sides of the county and, and, um. How if we use these industrial sites, commercial sites and all that. It would cut down on taxes for the citizens and that sort of thing, bring more revenue and all that. And I went to TPO and PDC and talked to Bob and everything else. Hey, what, well, we wouldn't be classified for anything. And the reason is we're not shovel-ready. And we can't get the shovel-ready. And even Grove's a prime example of some of the sites that we had down there that. They were like, okay, if we don't have water, we don't have sewer, we don't have cable, we don't have interconnection, we don't have anything down there. Well, here's a nice piece of land. That you could put this on. But it might take you eight years. Well, have a nice day. I'll see you later. And there were other communities that were.
I understand, I understand all that. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out, you know, how we move so quickly though from a. You know, eight years before you open to two years. Just because of this grant.
If, if you look on the tiers, it shows you on the tier levels. Of tier one is this, tier two is this, and, and we were. Last year at a tier three, I believe. We were right at tier three and then we went.
Property when it was certified in 2018. Pre rezoning was a certified tier one. If they would have submitted a certification request la, after getting the property rezoned, they would have been certified as a tier two. The capital improvement program study funding that we put forward last year and this year. Was to try to increase four sites by one tier. So from a two to a three. By having construction-ready wet utility documents in hand. Ready to negotiate with a private property owner to say, what are you proposing to build? We can turn over those plans to a business. Having those plans gets them from a three to a four if they submit a certification request. Um, after these studies were done. So that there's the difference between where they are today and where they could be after this work.
Basically, it's speeding up the process.
But so, so I'm still trying, okay, so if, if I understand it, so it's going to take a, at least a year to get that, those documents in hand. Right?
About a year, yes.
Yes, and then.
Hopefully a little less, but. I'd say 12 months to be safe.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm, it seems to me things take longer than you, you would normally expect them to. But, but then, um, it would take presumably, uh, some significant period of time to get from. Those plans to the actual infrastructure in the ground. Yeah? I mean, at least two years, I would think, no?
Developers of the Enterprise Center already have plans under review in our planning division now. For some phasing of the initial development they want to do in that park. If we have site plans in place for the wet utility extensions. If they have site plans approved for development of say a first land bay in there. Within two years, something could be up and operational.
Okay, okay. So, so, so that, that really makes it, um. Useful, you know, I, I think, I guess what I'd like is the opportunity to take a look at those plans, just so I have. Have a sense of what it is that's going to be going in there, if, if that's, if that's where we're. Where we're at already. I mean, but.
I'd like to see them too. But we know, we know where they are. We can certainly get those from community development.
So in my mind, the sooner that we can get something like this done, the sooner we start recouping. And then we're adding to our tax revenue. Bottom line. I'm sorry, you, I think you were trying to make some points.
The, um. We've, we've missed other opportunities because we're not site-ready.
I understand all that, right?
And, you know, this is helping us get site-ready at least.
Yeah, I guess all I'm saying is that if, if we are at this point, I, I'd like to know what this point is leading us to. That's all. And, and so if we have that by.
I don't think we know totally. I mean, we know this, we know.
Yeah, I mean.
We know what's on the master plan and the proffers for the Enterprise Center.
Right.
And staff obviously does a great job in making sure the development is consistent with those. So I, I've seen a massing study that showed 2.2 million square feet laid out on this property. Where the master plan allowed up to 3.2, but with wetlands and crossings and other things that have to be done in there.
Right.
Um, so I think that's probably more realistic. That's probably more based on engineering and their analysis. Of not only what they can build, but also what the marketplace is currently demanding.
But with this study, this study is just engineering. How and where and the, the lines will go. It's not putting lines in, it's not digging any dirt, it's not changing. Anything on the site is not doing, it's just engineering. Work in order to move the water and sewer up to the location, basically.
So that the, the developer could come in and say, we have someone ready to fill, uh, the first land bay.
And that puts us.
We need to get that water sewer in the ground. Can we take the county studies that have been prepared to go with our studies we've done internal to the park to show how we're going to extend all the way through? Marry those two up and be able to get that prospect signed to that building. And operational within, you know, the next two years.
And that word puts us to that tier four with having that.
If they put in all those studies for the certification through the state, it's not just automatic. You have to get the certification letter from the state. That they would then share with other prospects looking at the rest of the park. To say you could be up and running within 12 months.
And the trouble I've had in Hampton Roads with all the other sites that are out there, it's not as many as you would think. But they're ranking better than we are because we have, we have the land. We have the ability, but we're not doing anything. And so the companies that come in. And I've heard it more than one time. They come in and they're going to Suffolk. We're going to Norfolk. We're going over here and, you know, we, by having this ability. We're just basically taking the commercial land. And, and making it more desirable so a company can come in. And start work quicker than going through our process of. Okay, they, they've come in, they've got a permit, now they've got to get the water, now they got to get sewer, they got the environment, they can, it, it, it's a whole lot more. And most companies are not going to spend that time. And that's why I think. The governor, not, not this one. The one before, the one before, the one before have all been promoting ready sites. It's not just our governor didn't just think about this yesterday. This is governor after governor saying, and, and I've heard it since I've been in the TPO and PDC. We've got to get ready sites if Virginia is going to compete with these other states. And keep the cost from our residents down. And so this is just a component of that process that all the other communities are doing as well.
When VDP is approached by a company saying, we'd like to consider Virginia for a site and whatever their parameters are. When those RFI's come through to the Alliance or to localities saying, do you have any sites that meet our site requirements? More often than not, our answer is no. Sometimes they, we have site requirements, but then they ask for utilities or some other, we need, want you to build a substation. Or we want you to do some other thing that's just cost prohibitive. We don't put in for those. It's. Having this site, Enterprise specifically, as well as some of our recent successes with the property. Down in Greenmount that was acquired and sold, um, is now under construction. Uh, some of the projects, some of the limited properties we have under public control, uh, EDA control in James River. We're fortunate in that we have some available industrial property, far more than most localities in the peninsula have. You know, sites like Suffolk and Franklin and Isle of Wight on the other side of the water. Have a lot more land, but they also have a lot more problems trying to extend infrastructure and, and attract. A labor market to be able to tell a company, we can fill the jobs for what you're looking for.
And, um, you know, and I understand the concern with, okay, is, is this private? You know, but we've done private partnerships in different ways. SLAP is one. I know we've replaced a lot of streams in James City County that part of that stream's owned by a private owner. And because we care about our water quality and the end product. We've repaired that with money that's come from the state and come from the federal government. That we've applied for for matching grants to fix a stream, which I'm all for. I think we ought to fix those areas and, and some of those areas, as we know, were messed up by development upstream. But we've used private funds as well to, and, you know, fix these streams up. It, it's a small thing, but we're talking 250 to get 485.
Right, and, you know, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure how I feel about this, this entirely. I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it necessarily. I'm, I'm, I have an open mind on it. But I, I'm just trying to understand some of the process here and what we already know and what we don't know. Uh, and, you know, um, my concern about this property all along has just been, there was a lot more, I don't know than there is I know. Uh, and, uh, so if there's something else to know, I'd like to know it. That's all.
I, I, I'd like to tag on to that because I think, I think you're absolutely correct. It's what we don't know. One of the questions I had, I, I just took, took a note earlier, our, our emails and discussions back and forth. Whenever we do the grants like this, most of these grants are accompanied, accompanied by. Uh, some sort of a performance agreement, aren't they? And I understand that we've got the grant here. We're being asked to approve it. We're being asked to prove the match. But we don't have any Commonwealth James City County performance agreement. We do?
Under review and part of the authorization, had we gone to a vote today, would have been to. Accept the money, appropriate the money, and also to authorize the administrator. To sign that performance agreement between the state and the county.
And what kind of, uh, James City County developer performance agreement do we have?
Separate agreement.
Has it been done? Okay.
Property just sold three weeks ago. So we've not had the opportunity. And we wouldn't take the staff time to be able to negotiate a document to do that. For something that was not a little bit further along in its, in its process.
I think this comes back to exactly what. Dr. McGlynn just said, um, because. These are things I think that are, if they're, if you're going to go down this path, these are things that are very important. You know, because it's, this determines how this gets done. And we don't know. We don't know. I don't know what, what, what they're going to put out there. You know, we, we basically gave them a, a. Part blanche. You know, it's, um. We have no idea. We don't know who the owner is. I mean, we know who the owner is. We don't know who the, uh, we don't know who he's going to sell it to. We don't know who the businesses are going to be. We don't know, we don't know anything. And I, I'm, I'm just, I think that's, that's the, the, the thing that has really sort of frustrated me with this whole thing. Anyway.
Understood.
And please, please do not take any of that personally.
Understand.
I mean, this, I, I'm not throwing rocks at you, Chris.
Understand.
Okay, please. Uh, I, this, this whole, this whole process, I think is, has been. Concerning.
It seems to me when you're dealing with this sort of situation. You can't do this until you do that, and you can't do that until you do this. And not all business deals are. Just wide slam open until you get the momentum going, so to speak, as an elementary way. Of saying it. One thing depends on the other, and until things start to line up, then you've got a, a plan in place. So to cut things off at the knees just because is a little, um. And I'm not saying we're doing that, we're discussing it, but the thought of doing that is a little bit, um. Unfortunate because I don't, I don't think that benefits anybody. Especially jobs, tax base, revenue.
In my 26 years of working either for or in James City County, I've been in this room and behind this podium many times where. I've listened to developers come up here and the question is asked. Well, we've heard what you've done, we've seen the pictures, that's great. Who's it going to be? And the answer is generally an unwillingness from their side to put out a brand name or put out a company unless they specifically know. Who it is and it's already signed, because they don't want to be held to that. So it's a big difference between industrial prospects and retail and things like that. But when retail gets rezoned, we have the same sort of questions, just at a different scale. Versus an SUP that comes through for a very specific, uh, fast food restaurant or for another type of retail. Um, this is a much different animal when you're talking about up to 2 million square feet of industrial and. You know, anywhere from five to eight buildings of varying sizes depending on who the end user happens to be. The site down in Greenmount that the county sold, the Inlight Development last year is being developed as a 374-foot. 374,000 square foot distribution logistics center. It could be one business, it could be two, they could split it up into three. Depending on who the end users happen to be. We don't know that yet, but we know that it will get filled because it has access to the interstate. Access to the port, proximity to other infrastructure. access to the port, proximity to other infrastructure, Fort Eustis, et cetera. A very different scale, obviously, but it's the same sort of thing. We don't ultimately know who they are going to be. We can just look at their track record and say, who are the types of businesses they've attracted and other developments they've done throughout the United States? And I think the Hazelwoods made a, a good decision. We met with four prospective developers at the site, and this one that, that ended up landing the contract was by far the most engaged and the most willing to consider what the proffers said, what the master plan called for, what architectural standards had to be adhered to versus others that said, yeah, that's great, this is how we do it. So I have a certain confidence in the level of seeing the cooperation we've seen with them, the community development, JCSA administration, the attorneys in our dealing with them have been to date. But that doesn't get to the point that you're talking to Ms. Reisenhour of knowing the specifics associated with exactly who it's going to be.
Leaving over at Stonehouse Commerce, I mean, the, the properties over there change hands all the time. You don't always know exactly what's going to be right there. They could, it changes.
Right. But, but there, there are questions about, you know, if there is already performance agreement, we don't kind of have a sense of what that, what that would be. If, if we know that there are plans in for the first land bay, you know, then-
The, the performance agreement, let me clarify, Mr. McGlinnan, is between VDP and the county in terms of the operation of how this grant would work as a reimbursement grant. The county engages in the engineering firms to do the study, the money is outlaid, and when it's adhered to, that money comes from the state to the county. It doesn't lay out anything beyond operation of how the grant money works. The, the separate agreement Ms. Reisenhour just spoke to between the county and the developer would still have to be developed before we would just take those approved plans, when and if they exist, and say, we're willing to give them to you to be able to put the water sewer in the ground to extend into that first land bay right away.
Right.
So it's just, it's a process.
Right. So I just wanted to clarify that. Performance agreement is just to lay out the, you know, how, how the, the grant works. It's not money that's afforded the county upfront.
In here, in some of this, either the email traffic back and forth or whatever, the documents, everything, that beyond this, when you start digging in the ground and putting in water and sewer lines, zero tax dollars go into that, correct?
No portion of this that's publicly funded construction of those lines.
Okay. That's what I want to hear. That's what I want to hear. Because that, that's, you know, I, I fully expect the next thing to come down is they're going to say, hey, you know, we could probably bring a whole bunch of really good companies in here and generate a lot of tax revenue for you. We just need a couple of 6, 8, 10 million on our, on our, on our water and sewer. Nobody's been willing to, to do anything up to now. It's all been done with public money. And so I'm, I'm, I, color me a little skeptical, if you will, please.
Mr. Reisenhour, if I could add, you know, Chris, at this point, there is no other public money committed.
Oh, I know.
But as with many of our economic development projects, if we had somebody that was going to generate an $80 million capital investment and came to us asking to put in something, and normally we're doing it after the fact, but there's certainly situations where we might recommend to you, you do it differently. So I don't want to tell you it couldn't happen, but today there's not. The expectation today is we will get the design plans done. If the grant's accepted and we move forward, somebody else, the end user, would pay for those utilities. That's the expectation today. If there was an opportunity for other outside funding, that we could apply their money and get outside state funding or federal funding, I think we would be inclined to try to do that. If it took a little bit of local funding to get, if we put in half a million and somebody else puts in 10, would we make that recommendation to you? Probably. But we would do that with your understanding of the project, and we wouldn't commit it ahead of you. So, but I don't want to tell you when, if we came back in two years with a project in hand that wants to go to that site and we're asking you for money that you remind us, we said we would never do that. We only caveat that based on what we know today. And as of today, we don't have an expectation of any more public money in the site. But that could change based on the end user.
Chris, this is inside the PSA, correct? Thank you.
Forgive me, Ms. Reisenhour, if you were asking the question as to whether it would ever happen. I'm saying it's not part of this.
No.
As Mr. Stevens said, that's not to say it couldn't happen with a different. In full disclosure, the grant application initially put forward money as a part of our request to be able to have the ability to construct. We didn't get funding for that. It was encouraged by the state to make our application more complete. We didn't, you know, we wouldn't have had the matching money to do it without private development coming forward for that. So we knew upfront going in that we stood very little chance of getting the construction money, but giving that distress level that we're at this year, getting the money to do the studies was our primary goal, and that's what we received.
Any other questions? All right, so it looks like y'all need some more information. Am I hearing that from, from the group?
I think Ruth wants to be able to vote for it.
Right.
So if, if it, I think what she indicated July, or June 13th.
And I spoke to the folks at VDP while their preference would be to get this, you know, as soon as possible. They understood the realities of, of the calendar, and if they get the performance agreement after the next meeting, assuming a positive vote from the board, they're okay with that.
We're looking for a postponement to July 13th meeting.
June 13th.
Don't put out July, good gracious. June 13th.
And that was recommended by vice chair, so roll call. Ms. Sadler?
Hi.
Mr. Reisenhour?
Hi.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Hi.
Mr. Hippel?
Hi.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Board requests and directives. Anyone have anything?
Do we, are, are we doing those today?
We don't have to.
I'll just, I'll just make a quick reference of the fact that we had the police department's award ceremony last week during law enforcement week, and Ms. Reisenhour and Ms. Larson attended as well as I did. And I understand that, I know that the county administrator is going to make an announcement in just a little bit, and maybe I'll, I'll hold off on that last bit then until, until after that occurs. And wanted to express my appreciation to Senator Amani Mason and to Betsy Fowler, the executive director of the regional library, for attending with me a community meeting in Grove. We had over 50 citizens in attendance and a very lively discussion that aired a number of issues, gave a good opportunity to brief the community on what was happening and to find out a little bit more about what people are concerned about. And then finally, I did get the opportunity to ride Dark Coaster at Bush Gardens, which is their, their brand new ride. Had an opportunity to meet King Ludwig of Dark Castle. And my, my riding partner on the, the ride itself was Rita McLennan, the director of the Virginia Tourism Council. It was a very exciting day. I know the county administrator was there as well, and I managed to survive the, the trip and encourage everybody to go. Mr. Stevens tells me that the, the line on Saturday was 105 minutes long to get on the coaster, so, and worth every second.
Well, kudos to you for doing that. I would, I would like to, since we've shared a couple of things. I did recently attend the grand opening of Shio Oriental Rugs. They moved from Jamestown Road over to Newtown. They have a wonderful display over there. It's great business that's been here for 50 years. So they were celebrating their 50th anniversary as well. So I did do that. And we had a great, there was a great event, a bit precarious, with the EDAs and shows the excitement about businesses in the, in our region. So I was very happy. I mean, it was packed. It was, never been there, new place to take the kids for the, for the summer, even though it's not in Jame City, but that's okay. It was still fun, great food.
Okay. Anyone else?
I was going to say, I did attend the ribbon cutting for the pavilion. I think Dr. McGlinnan came with them.
No, I wasn't able to attend.
Oh, Scott, Scott King. But I, I remember, because we, we were running a little late, the train came along the trail, tracks there, and I wasn't sure anybody was going to make it, but we had quite a turnout for that. And that, the pavilion adds 32 inpatient psychiatric beds to the facility they have there, and they are a valuable asset to have in the community. So I was very, very pleased to be there for that. Did just say with the police awards, I'm really glad that we're having that back in person now. That's one of the more enjoyable, I think, events for us to attend. Did go to business appreciation that evening that the EDAs held down in the city of Williamsburg, and surprising, I was able to find a place to park close enough that I could actually get there, so stayed for, stayed for a little while and get quite a crowd. One thing I would like to bring up is that the Chamber of Commerce did their budget. The budget for this coming fiscal year is 1.099 plus million dollars. It's about 63% salary benefits for, I think, seven full-time and two part-time, they may have one out right now, employees. And the operations is about 36% of that, of that money. About 36% of all of their money is maintenance of effort money from the locale, from the localities. So that budget was adopted at the last meeting, and the annual meeting for the chamber will be in June.
All right. Thank you. County Administrator, Paul.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have more than normal, so if you'll, I guess, indulge me and let me run through these. I do want to just follow up. Our PC chairman, Frank Pollster, mentioned that NACO would award a 2003 achievement award for our best in planning category. And I just want to again thank our staff and really commend them. And I thank the board of supervisors and planning commission members, staff and consultants for all the time and effort in developing the comprehensive plan and working through that process. But I am pleased that Jame City County is getting that national recognition. So I do want to tout that some. Also want to mention a couple other awards, and I'll share more written with you later, but the Peninsula EMS Council awarded our fire and EMS departments outstanding agency award for their services in the area, along with our chief Ryan Ash was awarded the regional award for EMS excellent, which is unusual to have a chief to receive that. But both result, both awards are a result of our department's focus on training, education, the implementation of several new pieces of equipment, which provide new operational capabilities. And most recently, Jame City County Fire Department was the first Peninsula EMS agency to implement a whole blood program into our operations. We did that last fall, and Chief Ash would tell you that, he believes, we've had a number of calls in which we, that made the difference in a person getting to a hospital in a stable condition was able to be saved. That really has made a difference. And all of these efforts are aimed at providing the best care to those we serve. So I do want to commend Chief Ash and the department in recognition by their Peninsula EMS locality. So again, congratulations to them. I'd also mention our Newtown concert series that we had run through May. We are going to extend another four weeks. We had a partnership with the Newtown Association. They've agreed to pay their 50% share of that, and is the concert series in Williamsburg, I understand, is not running in June. We had initially not wanted to overlap that, so we ran ours in May. They've been very well attended through May, and we have extended those through June, recognizing they're not going to conflict with what's going on in the city, because there are no concerts going through Wednesdays in June in downtown Williamsburg. So we will run that in partnership with them through the end of, or through June 21st. Also want to mention that Ms. Larson and I attended, or invited, I guess all invited, but she and I were able to attend our school division's Herbie Hancock Peter of Here Jazz informant session. Really pretty impressive. I wasn't sure what I was walking into. Was at Jamestown High School yesterday, and I believe War Hill today. Had Sean Jones, which is sort of a lead trumpeter in the country at this point, a very renowned and accomplished, along with Lisa Henry, who's a vocalist, who's been performing for a very long time. But the really amazing part is they had six high school students from around the country, from LA to Chicago, to DC, to New Orleans, and a few others, that were just phenomenal in terms of their performance of some jazz music. They talked about jazz and explaining jazz music and sort of the history and the why. Each of the students sort of told what drew them into the program. And then they had some time with one-on-one time with smaller band groups within our high schools. So again, really a neat program. And the group is, the concert was phenomenal. We were there just over an hour. But this same group, the performances, I understand it's going to be at DC at Blues Alley Saturday night. So if anybody wants to run that way, they can enjoy their performance as well. On the staff side, we do have a Yarmouth Creek Management Plan Meeting that is coming up on Wednesday, May 24th. So tomorrow from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at the Jame City County Library Meeting Room, they're on Croker Road, and it'll be the first public meeting of the plan development process. So those interested in the Yarmouth Creek Management Watershed Planning Plan, that would be a time for them, May 24th, 5:30 to 7:30 at the library on Croker Road. And then finally, as, as Mr. McGlinnan alluded to, I do have a police chief announcement. You know, we have had our former chief retire last fall. We've had interim chief since late November. But I do want to share that I've selected Deputy Chief Mark Jamison of Lynchburg, of the Lynchburg Police Department to be our next permanent chief here in Jame City County. Chief Jamison brings a great deal of experience and education to this position. I'm extremely optimistic that he'll bring a fresh perspective and new ideas to help the department move forward. I anticipate that Chief Jamison will be here in early July, and we'll invite you to his swearing in slash pending ceremony, whatever we put on there for the department in early July, as we finalize that date. I'll have more to share about Chief Jamison as he arrives in July, but I am extremely pleased to have the decision made and look forward to welcoming him and his wife to Jame City County. They are really excited to be coming this way. I know they're in town this week looking for a place to be here so that they can be part of the community in July as well. I did share this announcement, announcement with the police officers this morning, and we'll send a news release following your meeting today, or maybe going out as we speak, but it was to go out late today. I also want to thank the Virginia Chiefs Association for conducting the recruitment and interview process for us. They brought it down to two candidates that I ultimately interviewed and resulted in the selection of Chief Jamison. And I also want to thank you for your patience through all the process. I know for you, you fielded a lot of comments about the department and what's going on, and staffing shortages and other. And then finally, and extremely important as well, I will personally express my appreciation for Chief Dahlman and commend him for the extraordinary effort over the past six months moving the department in a positive direction despite many challenges, many not his own creating. He just stepped into and they happened, and staffing shortage that were ongoing when he stepped in. You know, I've spoke with a lot of our officers over the last six to nine months, and despite, you know, all those I have spoken with have been extremely complimentary of the work that he has done as interim chief. He's a definite asset to the department, and I look forward to our continued working relationship going forward. But I did want to share, I'm excited to have Chief Jamison selected. I look forward to his arrival in the community, and we'll certainly get you introduced to him in the short timeframe. So that's all I have.
Good job, chief.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll look, I need a motion to go into closed session in consideration of this position of public held properties located at 3100 John Tyler Highway, where discussion and open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of a public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia. In consideration of personal matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards and or commissions pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and its reappointing Clean County Commission. Do I hear, have a motion?
A move.
So a move. Thanks, sir. Roll call, please, sir. Ms. Sadler?
Hi.
Mr. Reisenhour?
Hi.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Hi.
Mr. Hippel?
Hi.